This is Ian Namrav, the Chair of the Edina Planning Commission, welcoming everyone to our meeting tonight on Wednesday, June 23rd. City Edina Planning Commission. We're meeting by Zoom, although I've heard, as we have for the past 15 months or so, although I've heard that we may be starting to meet in person again in the near future. So, but tonight, again, we're meeting by Zoom. And we have an opportunity, we have four public hearings, although I believe one will be continued. And we're going to try to move, where the planning commission has talked about how we can, how we, how we resolve things appropriately. So with that, with the meeting called to order, I will just ask Ms. Liz Olson of the City Edina Planning Department to do a roll call.
Thank you. Commissioner Ignew?
Present.
Commissioner Bartling?
Here.
Commissioner Miranda?
Here.
Commissioner Stroh?
Here.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here, thank you. So then the meeting agenda was distributed on Friday. Are there any changes to the agenda? Are any additions? Your motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved.
Ms. Olson, could you do, oh, for everyone watching, if you don't participate all the time, we, we're going to do a lot of roll votes because that's how we legally have to confirm who voted. In, in, you know, we, we can't just do a, a voice vote, aye or nay. So you might be hearing a lot of role, a lot of roll votes tonight. Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote to approve the agenda?
Commissioner Ignew?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Stroh?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett? Commissioner Bennett, you're on mute.
Aye. Hear me now? Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Chair Namrav.
Aye. Next on our agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from our meeting on June 9th, which will also be distributed on Friday. Does anyone have any changes or questions regarding the minutes for our last meeting? Is there a motion to approve them?
Review the minutes submitted.
Is there a second? Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote to approve the minutes from June 9th?
Commissioner Ignew?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Stroh?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Chair Namrav.
Aye. That takes us to our public hearings. The first matter on a public hearing tonight appears to be a continuance to jump to the next meeting, July 14th, 2021, for a front yard setback variance for 5404 Starter Circle. City Planning Director Kerry Teague, is that correct? We're continuing this one?
That's correct. We would ask that you continue this one to your next meeting.
You need a motion in a second? Is that what we need?
Yes, please.
Anyone?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote to continue that one?
Commissioner Ignew?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Stroh?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Chair Namrav.
Aye. Okay. So that takes us to our second public hearing matter, which is a sign variance to allow an additional 38.2 square foot building sign at the Bower at 3650 Hazelton Road. Appearing for the city, I believe, is Assistant City Planner Emily Bodicker.
Yes, thank you. Let me pull up the presentation here. All right. The applicant is requesting a sign variance for an additional wall sign at the Bower, which is located at 3650 Hazelton Road. 3650 Hazelton Road is located on the north side of Hazelton, just west of the promenade and is the former Guitar Center site. The proposed 38.2 square foot building sign is located on the east elevation of the building and the proposed sign is in addition to the allowable 12 square foot building sign that is proposed on the south elevation and in addition to the 24 square foot monument sign. Both of those signs are oriented to the south. You can see the proposed location of the sign, which requires a variance here in red. The two signs that are allowed by code are shown with the yellow stars. Those are permitted signs. This sign here is the 24 square, 24 square foot monument sign. The second star here on the corner of the building is a 12 square foot sign. These are just visuals of the additional permitted signs that are proposed by the applicant. This is the building sign that is 12 square feet and this is the monument sign that is located on.
Hello, Ms. Bodicker. This is Ian. I'm, I was unable to hear you for the last minute or so. Was I the only one?
I was unable to as well.
Emily, you might need to repeat some information. I think a lot of us didn't hear about the last minute of your presentation.
Okay. I will go back here. Are you guys able to hear me now? Proposed 38.2 square foot building sign that's located on the east elevation of the building to the signs that will be allowed per code. Those two signs, one is the building sign that's 12 square feet that is shown here with this yellow star that's shown on the south side of the building. The second sign is a 24, 24 square foot monument sign that's oriented towards the south. These are just the visuals of the signs that are also proposed in addition, or that are allowed. The proposed sign is in addition to these permitted signs. This B is a 12 square foot building sign and this is a visual of the 24 square foot monument sign that's permitted. The subject property allows for signs that more fit the size and scale of the building on which they're located. The additional sign will help identify cars that are traveling southbound on Hazelton Road and entering the roundabout. The proposed additional 38.2 square foot sign on the east elevation is reasonable for the 18-story building. The sign fits the size and scale of the building on which it's located and has minimal impact on the surrounding neighborhood. The subject property is located within the Southdale District and the Southdale District has many commercial, residential and mixed-use buildings. Proposed signs are more similar to signs that are allowed on those surrounding properties. The sign on the east elevation of the building will help with visibility and wayfinding for cars that are traveling southbound on Hazelton Road approaching that roundabout. The proposed variance will not alter the character of the neighborhood. The location and size of the proposed size sign will have limited impact on those surrounding properties within the Southdale District. Tonight, staff's recommendation is to approve the requested variance to allow an additional 38.2-foot square foot wall sign on the east elevation of 3650 Hazelton Road based on the findings and conditions outlined in your staff report. With that, I apologize for any sound issues or visual issues, but I can answer any questions and I believe the applicant is either on the call. I know he's watching on Facebook. I've asked him to call in, but he will be able to answer any questions as well.
I don't have questions for staff today. And if you, and if you need clarification, I suppose, because we did have some audio problems, that would be, you know, we'd ask that also. Emily, are you able to un, unshare your screen? Commissioner Stroh's?
Yes. Emily, the, the, the last screenshot you had up, it's sort of like the brown banner with Bower on it. That is a view of what they're requesting the variance for?
Yes. That is the proposed sign on the east elevation of the building.
Is that lit or is there, I mean, or maybe some lighting?
Yes. You can see that darker box is the night rendering of the sign. So yes, it is lit.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Planner Bodicker, so I, I have a couple of questions on whether a variance is appropriate, actually. This is the, is, this is by far the biggest building in the immediate vicinity, isn't it?
It's 18 stories, yes.
So a car wouldn't really need a street-level sign to see the building or distinguish the building, would it?
Not necessarily to help with wayfinding, like where the entrance or you're coming up on the building. It shows, you know, with pedestrian views on the promenade.
Okay. And the size and scale of the building, I mean, that really is self-created, isn't it?
The height of the building, yes, was decided with the redevelopment project.
Okay. One thing it says in the staff report is the proposed signage is more similar to signage allowed on surrounding properties. Could you, could you discuss that a little bit more? Like what, how the sign is similar to others in the neighborhood?
There are different zoning districts in the Southdale area and so with the redevelopment of this site, with the creation of the PUD, the sign allowance is decided on that time or at that time. And so during that process or during the creation of the PUD, it was written into the PUD that the signage for this site was allowed per the PRD zoning district. And so that allows the 12, or that is what is requiring the 12-square-foot building sign and the 24-square-foot monument sign. And surrounding properties, there's commercial properties in town or in the Southdale District, those, you know, the wall signs are allowed to be up to 15% of the wall area. There's other residential buildings that have different signage regulations that allow for more signs in the Southdale District as well.
Then this would be similar to that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Bodicker, does the applicant wish to speak?
The applicant was having some issues logging onto the call. He didn't have a formal presentation, but he was going to call in in case there were any questions. I know he is watching on Facebook and he's trying to call. Liz is helping him out right now.
Thanks. This is Liz. He should be able to call in in just a moment. We are having a little bit of an issue. So if you just have patience for a minute, we'll get him on the call.
Jump in. Anyone else watching? If a member of the public wishes to call in, I was going to announce this, I'm, I'll take this opportunity now. This is a public hearing and in a moment, there'll be opportunity for public testimony. If, if someone would like to do so, here's the information for calling. 1-800-374-0221. Enter conference ID 8289182 and then press star 1. You'll have to enter your name or give your names, address and telephone number to the operator. And then you'll be placed into queue and you'll have up to three minutes to speak. Ms. Olson has the applicant enabled to connect.
We're waiting for an email confirmation, but he should be joining us in just a moment here. I gave him the direct number to the meeting to call in as well.
Hello, this is Sean.
Sean, we, we can hear you. This is the Edina Planning Commission.
Great.
It's your, it's your opportunity. Welcome. Hey, if you'd like to say something about your variance, have at it.
Yeah, on the variance that, that, yeah, on the variance that Emily kind of went over, the sign is, I know there was a question on if it was lit and it is lit, but it is a, a softer lit. It's a halo-lit lettering, so it lights around the lettering. I just wanted that to be stated, that it's more in the character of the building than anything else. It's not going to be like a big, bright retail sign on the side of the building. And also, the lettering is actually stainless steel. And with that dark, rich wood, simulated wood on the side of the building, it's going to blend in a little bit more and kind of look more architectural than anything else. It's also going to guide people down, like Emily said, down Hazelton to the building. And that's kind of why they're looking for it. And that if anybody's got questions, I'm more than happy.
Scott, so you guys made the determination that you needed a larger sign to make sure people can, you know, figure out turn here, basically?
Yeah, we did the, the sign to scale of the building. It's a little bit more, a lot of people want big and this sign is, I, I think is proportionate to what that wood band is. It's a little bit, it, the, the font that they use is very thin and very elegant. And we tried to keep it at a size that didn't look gaudy and outrageous. And it, from a distance, it's going to be readable from, from a car that's further down or somebody walking. And it is more of a pedestrian-type sign because it is lower on the building. And it's not like we're trying to get a, a car that's, you know, six, seven blocks away. We're trying to get them to make a decision as when they come, that they know that that's the Bower of Edina right there. They may know it's a big building, but that they know that's, it's right there.
Cue. Anyone else? Well, you can have a tweet later. This is a public hearing. To repeat the instructions, if anyone would like to call in, the number is 800-374-0221. Enter conference ID 8289182. Press star 1 to be placed into queue. You'll give the operator your name, address and telephone number. Dan, do we have anyone?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. At this moment, we do not have any callers in the queue, so I would advise we wait about a minute or so just to give the broadcast a chance to catch up. So then we've got 7:20. I will let you know if no one has entered queue.
Wait till 7:20, you think?
It has been right around a minute and we do not have any callers in the queue, so feel free to move forward.
Thank you, Dan. Is there, so should we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I moved close the public hearing.
My second.
Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote to close the public hearing, please?
Commissioner Ignew?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Stroh?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Chair Namrav.
So that brings us back to the planning commission. We've completed questions and so now the opportunity, it can be further questions. But this would be the opportunity if any planning commissioners have thoughts they'd like to share on this or make a motion. Commissioner Stroh's?
Yes, I think it's, the, the, you know, in our discussions about this project, I mean, we talked about build, you know, design all four sides. You know, so four different faces in the building. And I think this design could be important, not as much for traffic, but the whole pedestrian walkway is also a population that, you know, for wayfinding. So I think that's an important location in the sense of the traffic that may be on that promenade. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Bartling, do you, did you?
Oh, sorry. I'm just didn't, I'm just not on mute.
Sorry. Because we're on Zoom, sometimes I sound off mute. I assume that meant they wanted, anyone else? Anyone? Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, I'll just say that it'd be useful, I mean, if we're going to have more large buildings like this in the Southdale area, I think it'd be useful to have some sort of, you know, standard rather than come one by one, you know, if they need it. But otherwise, I'm, I'm fine with this. I just don't know how it is relative to other sized buildings.
Anyone else?
I move to approve the signage subject to the conditions and findings in the staff memo.
Is there a second?
Little second.
Can, can I suggest one thing? I just want to look at it. Is that we add into it something to capture Commissioner Stroh's thought about the value to pedestrians also into the reasoning? That accept, is that acceptable to the Commissioner Berube as the person who made the motion and Commissioner Stroh's is a seconder?
So to restate the motion?
Well, it would be including the motion as you made, but also add something into the findings that captures the pedestrian experiences identified by Commissioner Stroh is another reason for supporting the decision.
Go, go ahead, make that motion then.
Are you, are you okay with that, Commissioner Stroh's? Anyone else?
Yes, I would make that motion.
Okay. Ms. Olson, could you do a vote? An aye vote would be to approve the variance suggested with the addition of a finding that it is, that it will help the pedestrian experience, isn't it?
Commissioner Ignew?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Stroh?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Chair Namrav.
Well, congratulations to the applicant. That concludes that public hearing. The, I see they, it looks like they've called, dialed off. The next public hearing is a 2.33-foot, two, two feet, four inch height variance request to allow for a new 20-foot, four-inch detached garage at 4628 Bruce Avenue. Appearing for this staff is again Assistant City Planner Emily Bodicker. You're going to take all the pitches tonight, huh?
I guess so. Hopefully you have some better luck with the sound, but please let me know if you're having any issues. I'll leave my camera off for this one in hopes that that makes it a little bit better. The applicants and property owners, John and Tracy Rossman, are requesting a 2.33-foot height variance to allow for a new 20-foot, four-inch detached garage at 4628 Bruce Avenue. The property is located within the Country Club District on the west side of Bruce Avenue, north of Country Club Road and south of Bridge Street. The applicants were required to receive a certificate of appropriateness through the Heritage Preservation Commission for the demolition and construction of a new detached garage in the district. The Heritage Preservation Commission approved the COA request with conditions at their June 8th meeting. Those conditions included architectural elements such as windows or timber, timbering must be added on all elevations of the proposed garage. Any changes to the proposed plans would require review from the Heritage Preservation Commission. They require that an as date or a date-built plaque be installed with the construction of the new garage. And the last condition was that the maximum height for a garage is 18 feet or a variance needs to be approved by the planning commission for the height of the garage. There was an ordinance amendment in 2013 that affected the overall building height. That amendment was to the definition of how building height is measured. That change was so that at building height was measured, now measured from average existing grade to the highest point of the structure. Prior to that change, building height was measured to the midpoint of a structure from where proposed grade would sit. The city was experiencing buildings, including detached buildings, getting taller and taller due to varying roof pitches. The ordinance for garage height measurement was changed to address voiced concerns of residents throughout Edina that detached garages and structures are being built with significant ridge heights that were not in character with neighborhoods or within the intent of the city's zoning ordinance. The maximum allowed height did not change. It was how height was measured that was changed. The applicant submitted information that they believe showed that garages around the subject property were built taller than 18 feet. Those two properties were 4627 and 4629 Casco Avenue. Staff checked the approved building permits for both of those properties and for both of those garages and both permits were approved with complying, complying with the 18-foot height requirement. Staff then asked the city's engineering department to go out on-site and to measure the height of those garages as they were built and confirmed that both of those garages were built under 18 feet. There were some additional questions or surrounding garages were taller than the 18 feet. There were additional garages with, around the subject property that were built prior to 2013 with that ordinance amendment change. The applicant must show with energy variance that there are practical difficulties in complying with the code and that the proposed use is reasonable. Staff does not believe that there's a practical difficulty that prevents reasonable use. The garage could be constructed with a maximum height of 18 feet and meet the city's zoning requirements. There are circumstances on-site that are created by the applicant. The maximum height for detached structures within a rear yard is the same on all residential properties throughout Edina. The garage height could be designed and constructed to meet the city's height requirements. The proposed variance may alter the character of the neighborhood by allowing a structure to exceed the height requirements. However, due to that ordinance amendment in 2013, there are existing non-conforming garages that are built in Edina. All garages, whether they are built in the Country Club District or not, all require to meet that height requirement. The ordinance for garage height measurement was changed to specifically address concerns on height of structures being built that were not in character or within, within the intent of the city's zoning ordinance. There have been no variances approved by the planning commission since the ordinance has changed on how the city measures overall height. The height requirement allows for a half-story space above a detached garage with a reasonable height limit that has been the standard for the past eight years. Staff believes that allowing a structure of this height could set a precedent for future requests for garages or detached structures that exceed the codes, the city's code height requirement. The applicant has submitted additional information to staff on the 22nd, or Tuesday, that shows that the applicant now intends to install solar panels. The applicant has submitted additional information to staff on the 22nd, or Tuesday, that shows that the applicant now intends to install solar panels on a future phase of their garage project, project. Staff does not believe that the applicant has provided information that shows why the proposed garage needs to be two feet taller for those solar panels. A solar panel ordinance was amended in 2018 to allow for solar panels to sit two feet higher than the maximum structure height. So the garage is able to be built up to 18 feet tall with the addition, or additional height that the solar panels would add to the garage within that two-foot maximum. So with that, staff's recommendation is to deny the 2.33-foot height variance request to allow for a new 20-foot, four-inch-tall detached garage at 4628 Bruce Avenue. And denial is based on the findings that are listed in the staff report. With that, I can stand for any questions.
Does Bottiker, anyone on staff have any questions?
This is Commissioner Bartling. Just a real quick one. So to, just to clarify, the, so if the 18-foot is the max height, the solar panel could project two feet higher, so at 20 feet?
Correct, up to 20 feet.
Okay.
Anyone else? Commissioner Strauss?
Yes, a question for Emily. The, the HPC approved in their approval, the 18-foot height. And then and then they said anything taller would require be submitted to the planning commission for variance. So they, they, they didn't, they didn't approve anything. I mean, they, what they said was okay was the 18-foot height, right?
Correct. They were reviewing the, they were reviewing the architectural detail of the garage. And so with that condition, that, the condition was that the garage either needs to comply with the 18-foot height requirement or the planning commission would need to approve a variance.
Yeah, so they, they're, I mean, so they didn't make and, and their review is what's appropriate and consistent for the district, right? I mean, that's
Yes, they cannot grant variances to the zoning ordinance. So they couldn't approve a height increase above that 18-foot without the planning commission taking action on a variance request.
Okay. So, I mean, but, and just to repeat, I mean, what they approved was the 18-foot height. Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Anyone else? Planner Bottiker, I had a couple of questions. This is, this matter is a relatively unique fact pattern for us, or one we don't deal with as much. And I'll explain what I mean by that. This comes to us from the Heritage Board, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and we don't, I mean, you know, we get them occasionally, but usually we don't get variances that have first gone through Heritage Board approval. So this is as much education for me as anything. I'm just trying to figure out our scope on this. Do we have to limit our review to the plans that were submitted to the Heritage Board? Would any other plans need, and I guess there's a second a related question. Would any change at all to those plans need to also be approved by the Heritage Board before they came to us?
Before the plans came? Could you explain your question one more time? So you would ask that the plans that were changed prior to the planning commission taking action? Would need to be approved by the Heritage Preservation Commission?
Let me ask this a little differently. Are the, are the, we're, we're looking at a variety of plans and some of them include the solar panels. Were the solar panels part of the plan that went to the Heritage Board?
No, they were not. The initial submitted by the applicant was what the Heritage Preservation Commission reviewed at their meeting.
And so do we have to? Is our review based on the plans that went to the Heritage Board? Would any, or would any changes to those plans first have to go to the Heritage Board before we could look at changes to those plans?
The addition of the solar panels wouldn't necessarily need to be reviewed by the Heritage Preservation Commission. A certificate of appropriateness wouldn't be required for solar panels to be placed on an existing structure. With that being said, it wasn't part of the discussion at the Heritage Preservation Commission. The applicant did not speak of any solar panels on the garage at that point in time.
Okay, but we wouldn't need the Heritage Board to approve the solar panels even though they weren't, to, to review it, even though they weren't part of that presentation? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Well, we might be more questions later, but I see the applicants here and if the applicant likes to speak, you have, you know, you'll have 20 minutes. So that's according with the planning commission rule. So welcome. We look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, Chairman. My name is John Rossman. I reside at 4628 Bruce Avenue. I'm here with my, my wife Tracy. We own the property here. We've resided here since 2014. I'm sorry, since 2004. So we've been here 17 years. We know this property pretty well. So we work before you this evening with the two-phase plan, and we're looking at phase one of a two-phase plan to make 4628 Bruce Avenue a fully solar home here in Country Club and Edina. So the first phase is going to involve building a garage that is solar panel compatible. The second phase of the plan is to install those solar panels, and we'll talk about some difficulties that we're going to encounter with respect to snow removal and some solutions we found with respect to that. Now, Plan Two, Phase Two of the plan is important because not only are we going to produce enough electricity to make 4628 Bruce independent from fossil fuels, any additional energy that we produce, Tracy and I have talked about it, and we've been really inspired by the community solar garden in Edina. And we're talking about donating any additional energy that we produced from our solar array to lesser fortunate communities. So let's go ahead and take a look at some documents that we've submitted. So I know Emily, we're gonna hopefully do a fair screen here. It's open to take a look at Rossman Exhibit Number One. This is at page 72 of the agenda for anyone who's following along. So really, our, our journey that led us to here today started with this document. And as you can see, this is a press release from the city of Edina. Can you just scroll down a little bit for me, please? Thank you. And it says, "The city recently earned the prestigious SoulSmart Gold Designation, becoming the third city in the Twin Cities metro area to signal it is open for business for solar." But what does this designation mean for Edina? It says, "As a SoulSmart Designee, the city has completed a thorough review of its processes, codes, regulations, and much more so that residents and businesses have a streamlined process for going solar." And there's a quote down there that says, well, they talk about how there's a three-business-day turnaround for requests to go solar. And further, there's this comment here that, "We're proud to encourage solar in our community and look forward to future innovation in renewable technologies." Now, I want to focus on this first statement regarding, you know, that somehow or another, the processes here in Edina have been simplified regarding going solar. And Chairman, as you pointed out, this is an extremely confusing process. First, we had to apply for a certificate of appropriateness with the Heritage Preservation Committee. We then had to apply to the variance, for the two-foot, four-inch variance, which we're gonna talk about in some detail this evening. We then had to appear before this, well, we had to appear before the Heritage Preservation Committee. We then have to appear before this committee. If this is rejected, which, as you know, the city of Edina, the plan was recommended to reject our plans, we'll then need to go before the city council. We're looking for the simplified process that the city of Edina has promised us. And what I'm seeing here is, you know, something, something where really you would need like a master's degree in bureaucracy to figure out all the different, you know, permits and ordinances and meetings that we need to attend to build a simple garage and solar panel compatible. Let's move on to the, to the next slide, please. To be Rossman Exhibit Number Two, please. So our journey to make our home solar began with determining whether or not we could put solar panels on our existing home. And as you can see from this estimate, there's a, we, we received an estimate from several different companies. I have one here as an example. This shows that there are 17 panels that the company called Power Home is recommending that we install at our home. But note that 13 of those 17 panels, they are recommending that we install in the flat portion of our roof. So as you saw in an earlier photo, 4628 Bruce, where we reside, has a flat section on the top of the roof. Because of the pitch of the rest of the roof all the way around, we're being told that that is the place where we must install those solar panels. Next slide, please. Or Rossman Exhibit Number Three, please. Oh, one more comment with respect to this. Page 408, I'm sorry, page 108 of the planning committee documents does have that aerial view of 4628 where you can view that flat surface. So now this exhibit here talks about a federal grant that was given to a Minnesota couple in Duluth to solve the problem of snow buildup on solar panels. Like I mentioned in the previous slide, we're being told that the only place here where we can put up solar panels is gonna be on the top of our home. Well, that's gonna build up with snow during the winter, and I'm not gonna be able to get up there. No one can get up there. So I know that there is, and this is really the biggest detraction to solar energy here in Minnesota, and frankly, in the Midwest, is the buildup of snow on the solar panels. I know that we're talking about, you know, what obstructs access to direct sunlight, because that's what the statute requires. Snow buildup on those solar panels is going to obstruct access to direct sunlight. So this article demonstrates that this is an ongoing problem, and in fact, the federal government granted a $50,000 reward to this couple here in Duluth to solve this problem. Their solution involves putting nanotechnology on the solar panels and to slightly electrify them and heat them so that they warm the panels and the, the snow slides out. Here again, if we have the panels flat, on the flat part of our roof, the snow will never slide out. Next, next exhibit, please. This is another article demonstrating the efforts by the federal government to determine a way to make solar energy accessible in climates like ours where we have a substantial amount of snow. And in this instance, the federal government is recommending that the solar panels, you remove the casing from the solar panels because it's the casing itself that causes the snow to build up on the solar panels. So you saw me vigorously shaking my head when someone said, well, you can put a two-foot, some type of two-foot lift on these things. No, the federal government is telling us to take the casings off of them. And now the city of Edina is telling me to lift them up by two feet? I'm gonna listen to the federal government on that one. Let's go ahead and move to the next slide, please. The next exhibit would be Exhibit Number Five. Rossman Exhibit Number Five, please. Thank you. So we determined absolutely that we cannot put solar panels on top of 4628 Bruce because of snow buildup and because we can't access that place to remove the snow. And technology does not exist today to allow us to remove snow. So we started doing some studying, and this is an article here which demonstrates how a citizen activist for solar energy like myself can determine how can I get solar panels into my home. And this article written by solar expert Robert, I'm sorry, Roger Kuznia specifically states, "The ideal roof would be south-facing, get plenty of sunlight, and have a tilt of about 30 to 45 degrees." He goes on to say, "Ideally, your roof will get full sun between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. all year long." And he further references the National Renewable Energy Laboratory map, which provides formulae and guidelines for assessing whether you can hit that six-hour target to get sunlight to make those, those solar panels effective and cost, and cost efficient. If we can move to Rossman Exhibit Number Six, please. So now this elevation drawing does show the proposed solar panel location for Phase Two of this plan. And as you can see, we plan on putting this on the south side. The south-facing wall, like the, the expert said, you know, let's, let's put it there where it's gonna get the most sunlight. So that is our plan. And here again, as far as whether we submitted this to the Heritage Preservation Commission, we have not been asked about this. What we are asked about by the Heritage Preservation Commission was, put windows in, put timbering in. You know, they wanna drive up the cost of this thing. I'm trying to drive down the cost so I can buy more solar panels. So when you ask about, you know, why didn't the Heritage Preservation Commission rule on this? They were too concerned with windows. And I, I learned a new phrase called architectural elements. That's what they wanted us to add. So we're, we're looking for solar panels, but today, we're looking to build a garage that's compatible with those panels. If we can move to Rossman Exhibit Number Seven, please. So there's been a ton of talk here this, this evening about the height of the garage, but no one's asked what's inside. Let's take a look inside. So the, the primary characteristic that distinguishes this garage is the fact that we have the stairway right there. And as you can see, if we could just scroll down just a little bit, I have some comments on that. So the thought would be, and the plan is, that we will install solar panels on the south side, which is the side you can't see of the garage roof here. And then the owner of the home will be able to access those panels by going up the stairs and going into the solar panel maintenance room and accessing the panels. Whether we do that through like, what we're talking about is like a skylight that will open right there that will allow someone to, you know, step outside the, the roof and brush off those solar panels manually. I have a couple other ideas for strategies for mitigating snow. I don't wanna discuss it right now. But we will find a solution to this, to this snow problem that the federal government is throwing money at. And we're gonna do it through this garage. I do note with these stairs, these stairs can be converted to a ramp. These stairs can also be converted to a chairlift. So here again, we need to think about the future. We need to plan for the future. The future is gonna be, someone else might be living here, and that person might need to access that, that area to be able to use these solar panels. Those solar panels are gonna be the lifeline for 4628 Bruce. And whoever lives here in the future needs to be able to have access to that place to be able to maintain those solar panels. Let's move on to Rossman Exhibit Number Eight, please. So there's questions about whether this 20-foot, four-inch elevation, I'm sorry, height, is somehow or another out of character with the neighborhood. So we requested, so as part of the variance request, we were required to state how this was in character with the rest of the neighborhood. So I did do a Minnesota data, data privacy request to the city of Edina regarding all roof heights here in Country Club. And I was told it'd take at least a year to get that data. I looked through it. I don't wanna, I don't want the city of Edina to go through a lot of work. But we did agree, the city of Edina agrees that this document that we've submitted is accurate. And as you can see, it demonstrates numerous garages here within Country Club that are, have a height in excess of what we're seeking. I'd like to point in particular, and I don't wanna call out my neighbor's, my neighbor's address here in a public hearing, but I do wanna point out that on this first page, there is an address on Bruce Avenue. It is across the street from us. It's the exact same garage we are seeking to build, and it is actually eight inches taller than the garage we are seeking to build. So when the city planner says that this is somehow or another out of character with the neighborhood, all I have to do is look across the street and I see the same garage at the taller roof. Next exhibit, please. So for this board, for this committee to determine whether to grant a variance, we have to take a look at Menstat Section 397 point, I'm sorry, 394.27 subdivision seven. And as you know, that section provides that this committee must grant the variance if we can establish that there's been an obstruction to direct access for sunlight for a solar energy system. We'll go through the statute in a minute. Well, let's talk about the obstructions to sunlight for this property. So I stood in the exact spot where the garage is gonna be built, and I took pictures, and this is the first one in east view. As you can see, number one is a tree in our neighbor's yard. I have sat on, so right now we're sitting in the home office. And this looks out onto the garage site from where we are. So I've observed the sun all day long, every day for years from this spot. And I can tell you exactly what objects detract from, that's this spot receiving sun six hours a day, like the expert Roger Kuznia says in his, his documents. So the first item that blocks the sunlight early in the morning is gonna be this tree right here. Also, the home that we did not build, it was built in 1931, our home that we're in right now, blocks direct access to sunlight for the garage. In addition, I mentioned, you know, there's that taller garage, the same garage is taller. You can see it across the street vaguely with this picture. Let's move on to the Rossman Exhibit Number 10, please. So here we have another view. Thank you. So this is the southeast view from a solar panel for our solar garage. You can see here again, the houses is obstructing our access to direct sunlight. But you can also see the pitch on our roof is way too high for me to climb up there and try and access solar panels. Those things get snow on them or get those propellers from, from the trees. I'm not gonna be able to get that off. So we need to have something that's accessible, and our roof is not accessible. Let's move on to Rossman Exhibit Number 11, please. So here we have a south view from the, from the solar garage. And as you can see, the neighbor's house, and I'm not gonna call out the neighbor's address on a public hearing, the neighbor's house of the neighbor's house obstructs direct sunlight mostly during November through January. So when the sun is lower in the sky, the next door neighbor's house will block direct access to sunlight from this spot. Also, this beautiful tree here, this is a maple tree. I believe it is the oldest tree in Country Club. It's huge. It's got like a thirty foot diameter at the trunk. A beautiful tree. It is also blocking direct access to sunlight, obviously during, during the time of year that it has leaves on it. It's more blocked during the winter. It's less blocked. In addition, with respect to this, I will point out that, no, that's good. Let's move on to the next one. I know we're running out of time. We've only got twenty minutes. So we're at exhibit number, Rossman exhibit number twelve. So this is a southwest view from the solar garage. Here again, we have another object, a tree in our backyard. This will block access to the sun. It blocks access today. So this, this is the tree that June twenty, whatever, third, this tree will block access six hours a day. Will block, will prevent access for a full six hours a day during the summertime. If we can move on to the next exhibit, please. Rossman exhibit number thirteen. And so here we have our final view and this is the west view from the solar panel garage. As you can see, we have another tree here that's going to block our access. We're not asking to cut down the trees. We're asking to build our garage a little bit taller so that we can take advantage of the sun that's been burning up our lawns and killing our planet. So we've identified six objects here that are blocking direct access to sunlight, none of which are mentioned by the city planner. Let's go ahead and move to the next exhibit, please. So this is the Minnesota statute that we're talking about. Actually, you know, let's, that's fine. Let's, let's see, we've got, let's go through this statute. So this is the statute and I want to talk about how I found this statute. So when we applied for a variance, nowhere in the variance application does it mention that a variance may be granted for a solar energy system. Nowhere in the Edina form does it state that. However, you can scroll down a bit, please. Thanks. As you can see what I've highlighted here, here again, if you look at the, the city of Edina variance form that we filled out, nowhere does it say, do you want a variance for a solar energy system? But yet if I look at the statute, it's identified right there. So here again, when the city says, well, you didn't do this in time, you didn't do that in time. It's like a Kafka novel. I'm trying to figure out what we're supposed to be producing. I'm trying to figure out who we're supposed to be giving it to. We're reading forms from the city of Edina. The city of Edina doesn't even tell us that we can get a variance for a solar energy system. This is a very confusing situation. Let's go on to the next, the final exhibit, Rossman exhibit fifteen. So this is my amateur statutory analysis. But let's go through it and let's see if we meet all the criteria. So number one, and this is MinStat section three ninety four point two seven. And so we have six criteria, which here again, the city of Edina form only has four criteria, so we know it's wrong. So here's the real criteria out of the real statute. It says, variances shall only be permitted when they are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the official control and when the variances are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Well, I didn't have time to read the comprehensive plan, but I think renewable energy has to be part of it. I know the city of Edina did a study in twenty sixteen regarding renewable energy. I know we have that wonderful solar garden, Edina Community Solar Garden. So I believe that solar energy is part of the comprehensive plan. Number two, variances may be granted when the applicant for the variance establishes, sorry, that there are practical difficulties in complying with the official control. So the official control per the statute is the eighteen foot height limit. And I'm telling you that we need to go to twenty foot four inches to be able to take advantage of the sun six hours a day. So here, specifically what I need to establish for you is practical difficulties. So that's what it's all about. Have I, have I met my burden to establish practical difficulties? Let's dig into the statute a bit further. It says, practical difficulties means that the property owner proposes to use the property, A, in a reasonable manner. And I don't think anyone's saying that solar panels are unreasonable. And two, not permitted by an official control. Here again, you're telling me I can only build my garage eighteen feet. I've told you I've done the research and we need twenty foot four inches to be able to take advantage of the sun and to get that.
Mr. Rossman, you're at nineteen minutes.
All right, we'll go, we'll go until we're done. Number four, the plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner. We have identified six obstructions to direct sunlight that we've just gone through, four trees to our structures. I didn't plant the trees. I didn't build the structures. So these are things that are blocking our direct sunlight. Finally, it says, the variance granted will not alter the essential character of the locality. The guy across the street's got the same garage with a bigger roof. Okay, so don't tell me it's going to change the character of the locality. But what I'm most concerned about and what the Minnesota, or rather, the Edina, city of Edina variance document did not state was this right here. This is number six. This is important. Practical difficulties include, but are not limited to, inadequate access to direct sunlight for solar energy systems. Based on the foregoing and based on our presentation, we respectfully request that this committee grant our request for a variance.
Well, thank you, Mr. Rossman. Thank you for that presentation, Mrs. Rossman also. So that brings it to the planning commission. If anyone has questions for the applicant. Commissioner Barubi.
Yes, thanks for your presentation. You obviously put a lot of work into it. What I don't see on there though is, are you confident that that extra two feet and four inches is going to provide you with sufficient sunlight? Would it be significantly different from your eighteen foot?
Yeah, great question. So that's your personal observation and through that article that I presented from the expert Roger, was it like Kuzia or something? So there's specific formulae in there that you can use. Like I said, especially during the pandemic, I sat in this office every day and looked out that window and I'd measure when the sun would, would hit those areas. So I've been observing this for seventeen years. And I can tell you that based on my observations, we need that twenty foot four inches to get that six, six hours of sun per day. But we also need it so we can have those stairs so someone can actually get up there and access and maintain those solar panels. Because if we don't get the snow off them, they're no good.
Just to follow up, if I could, chair. So, so what you're saying is you won't get enough sun at eighteen feet, but you're completely confident you get enough sun at twenty point four feet? And you're willing to build it with all that expense and put the stairs in and put the solar panels on, but you don't really have a technical expert to tell you that that difference is going to be sufficient?
Here again, the city of Edina has said that it will expedite these requests. I've been studying solar energy since I was ten years old. When I was ten years old, I built a solar radio. I saved up my money and built a solar radio. I love solar. It's going to be people like me who solve this problem. It's not going to be the government. It's not going to be some scientist. It's going to be someone like me tinkering around in the garage saying, how can we get the snow off these solar panels? So no, I don't have some fancy expert. I'm, I'm at the edge of my budget just paying for this, you know, solar garage. So I mean, and you know, they want us to put windows on and architectural elements. Come on, we're trying to build a garage. We're trying to save the earth. You know, we're trying to get solar panels. There, there are no other solar panels here in Country Club, none. And the reason is because of the snow issue and because of these steep roofs. I can solve this problem, but you gotta give us, you gotta give us this variance so I can work on it.
I just want to make sure that, that providing a variance that'll let you go from eighteen feet to, you know, a higher roof line is really going to make a difference for you if what you're really concerned about is solar.
Yes, I've said three times, I've, I've done, I've done the measurements. You know, you, you're welcome to come to our house and take a look. I mean, we, you can, I've shown you all the trees that are around. I mean, if you want to give us a twenty five foot variance, we'll make it a lot taller, but that's, you know, all the neighbors are, are going to complain. We, we picked a height that's going to be below the highest height that's out there by far, lower than the person across the street, but yet it's still going to give us that six hours a day. Is, is it an exact science where I can get a, a team of experts from, from the University of Minnesota to sign off on it? Well, sure, if I had a million dollars, but I'm trying to get something done here.
Krishnur Barubi, any follow up? Anyone else? Krishnur Agnew.
I just like to echo Krishnur Barubi's statement and really appreciate your presentation. So if, if we were not to grant those variants today and you had to build this garage at eighteen feet, what would the impact be? Are you able to estimate for us, you know, really, what is that substantial change by not granting this variance?
My, my best estimate is an eighteen percent decrease in the solar it all puts in those panels. And I know you're going to want to see a bunch of data. You're going to have to take my word for it. I've done the math. I've looked at it. Based on my personal observations, eighteen percent decrease in the efficiency of those solar panels. And it'll be substantially more if I can't get the snow off them. It'll be a hundred percent decrease. So between eighteen and a hundred percent, how about that? And I apologize. I mean, I'd love to spend a million dollars studying this thing, but at some point we've got to stop having this analysis paralysis, you know? We've got hundred degree weather and terrible things happening to our planet. Someone needs to do something. We're, we're trying.
And then just to connect the, for me, could you make again that connection between the height? Because I understand all of the, the information on the, the science behind being able to remove the snow, but how is that different if it's two feet higher versus two feet lower?
My, my ability to, or the ability of the homeowner to go up the stairs and get the snow off close to, as opposed to standing on the ground. He might, these solar panels cost thousands of dollars each. I'm not going to take some darn roof where you can pull the snow off them. You take the snow off very carefully, you know? And so I need to be as close to those panels as possible to remove the snow. The plan is that by going into that solar panel access room, we can open up a hatch, I can brush them off my hand real close and I'm not going to damage my investment in those panels.
Okay, and the two extra feet enables you to have the staircase up to that second level, which gives you that access.
Correct. And the staircase is important not only for, well, look, it's either that I go up a ladder or like a firefighter's pole or something to get up there. My neighbor's got like a pulley system. No. We're going to go upstairs and if, at some point, the owner of this home needs to use like a ramp or whatever, that's going to be accessible too. This is going to be a primary feature of this home because this home is going to be a hundred percent solar. And so whoever lives in it in the future has to have that access. Not only to be able to, look, to be able to remove the snow, but we're also planning on storing solar batteries up there. No, we're, we're going to generate enough energy, not only for forty six twenty eight, but like I said, to donate to lesser fortunate communities.
Thank you.
I just have a few questions. What is the size of the garage? The dimensions?
Two by twenty four.
What is it?
Twenty two by twenty four.
So it's a two car garage?
Correct.
So I guess here's the, first of all, I applaud you on the solar piece. I'm, I'm all for that and renewable energy and everything. Unfortunately, because there's things I struggle with too. But unfortunately, we have to do this by fact and what the codes and regulations are. So the question at hand really here today is the eighteen foot variance that you're trying to meet. My question for you is, why could you not just flatten the peak? And make it eighteen feet? And you would maintain exactly the shape and size of the garage and the roof pitch? Because I know that that's important, the solar panels. Why couldn't you just crop the top, if you will, for better language and make that two feet shorter? And then you wouldn't even have to be here today.
Yeah, sure. That, that's one thought. There, there's a lot of great ideas for how to do this. We've picked one. And I've studied the sun and I've studied where the sun falls relative to other objects in our yard. And I've studied where the sun is blocked by certain objects that are immovable. And I've made the determination that twenty feet four inches is the correct height to be able to maximize that solar energy. If we flatten it out, we're going to have panels at a different angle. We're not going to be able to get that, we're not going to be able to get those stairs.
No, your panels, what, your panels and the pitch of your roof would not change. I'm simply saying, cut the tip of the top off. And also, in your comment on my, my question about the two feet, if you could go up to twenty feet, the panels, from my understanding, are about five by three feet, correct? Solar panels?
Well, you, you're talking about one, one possible solution. The Duluth couple that we put that, they put that report under, they're, they're working with a couple of different sized panels. But yeah, that's, that's the standard size, yes.
Regardless, the size of the panel, you could have the panel laid on the exact garage that you have. You cut off this thing by two feet and the panel will overhang with the structural piece. Yes, yes, trust me, yes. The panel can overhang.
We, we hired a builder, a professional builder who's licensed, who submitted a plan. That's the plan we submitted. I'm not a builder. I don't know about cutting off the top of a roof, whether that's going to affect the integrity of the structure. We're here to have the plan we submitted. It's been pending for ninety days. You know, we were promised this was going to be an expedited process.
Well, I'm here to help. I'm here, I'm helping you. I'm helping you and it's because I'm going to tell you that more than likely, and I guess I can't really speak for everyone, but if you do that, you don't even need to be here. And it, there's, I'm an, I'm an architect. I can tell you there's no structural.
Were you asking for a variance based on our research? You know, how is it, how is it that the city of Edina will support building this huge parking lot, but will object to you solar?
Mr. Rossman, Mr. Rossman, if I can interrupt. Just advice. I'm going to have a few questions for you. Yeah, I listened to Commissioner Bartley. She's an outstanding architect. You, you're getting, you might get something here that you like without paying a dime. Just a couple of ideas.
We paid free filing fees to get here today, so we're going to ask for a refund on loans.
Commissioner Bartley, do you have anything further?
I, I, I just, I mean, I really don't have much more to say. I'm giving my best advice as an architect on what I would advise for you. And as a, as a, as a resident of Edina who has gone through and is going through the variance process right now and, and permitting process. So I, I'm giving you my best advice, but that's all I can do.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Thank you very much.
Any other commissioners with questions? Okay, so I guess I had a question and I'm going to, I'm going to circle back to some of the questions you heard. But first I have a few different ones. Could you explain, this is a new term for me, wallaby attic storage? I understand attic storage. I'm not, I'm not an architect. I deal with like medical devices and software mostly. So what is, what is wallaby attic storage?
What architect answer that? Did, did you have an architect? I don't know. I, I've never heard of that. One of the commissioners is an architect, I think, perhaps could answer that.
Oh, you don't know what it is?
Never heard of it.
Oh. Because in the submittal you made to the Heritage Preservation Commission, you said, rather than further increase the footprint of the garage for storage, this new garage will optimize the rafter space for wallaby attic storage.
Our builder couldn't, yeah, our builder couldn't make it today. I, I have no idea what wallaby storage is.
Okay, but that was the reason why you asked for the height there and so.
No, we're, we're, we're going to be, like I said, that space is going to be used for, you know, the solar, to access the solar panels. I mean, that's where we're going to store the solar energy and that's where we're going to access and maintain the solar panels.
How come you, how come solar wasn't mentioned at the Heritage Commission?
We, you know, I'll tell you, this has been an extremely confusing process. Like I said, we've, we've had to go through three different gauntlets of questions about this. And we're, we're trying to figure it out. Like I said, when we applied for the variance, nowhere on that document does it say anything about solar. Tracy Camby, she's like, are you sure we can even do this? And look at this form, like we're solar. So, you know, if, if, if we didn't mention it because we didn't understand all the complicated bureaucracy that's involved with this, I apologize, but we're here today and we've got a solid plan.
I'm, 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 I'm definitely sympathetic to bureaucratic things and I've been there, although, I mean, I, I personally have mixed feelings about heritage preservation commissions. Some, some people love them, some people hate them. But it's very clear that Country Club is a heritage preservation district and that is how it is. And so, you know, we can't, all we can do is address the facts that have been presented to us and make our best decision based on the facts. So getting back to the initial questions Commissioner Barubi asked, I want to put a little flavor on that. I think, I think, you know, I don't want to speak for anyone, but solar is a great thing. But when we get requests for variances, this would be the first variance that I can remember where we didn't get like even a civil engineer's study or any data. All we have is your statement that this is what's needed. So do you have any numbers that you could share with us? Better by a civil engineer that says.
So, so a couple of thoughts. First of all, the city of Edina engineer was here and took a number of measurements. I know that those, that data is included with us, with the city submission. So there was an engineer out here, I think the city planner talked about that. And look, we were told a couple of weeks ago, you're going to need to hire an architect or an attorney to be able to do this. I called an attorney who wanted thousands of dollars to do this. We're trying to do this ourselves. I called an attorney who wanted thousands of dollars to do this. We're trying to do this ourselves. Okay, and as far as, you know, the plans, we're not seeking approval for, so we're not seeking a solar permit today. What we're seeking is to build the garage so we can put the panels on at a later date. So as far as whether you want phase two, you want me to like build this thing out to phase seven before you even approve phase one? We gotta get phase one approved. We gotta get this built. Right now, there is no structure at forty-six twenty-eight that is solar panel compatible. We're seeking to build that today.
But, but can you even share your numbers that show, I mean, you've made assertions, which I have no reason to doubt, but we've never got, we've never not gotten numbers before that show that at eighteen feet, you're only gonna have five and three-quarters hours of sufficient sunlight. And at twenty feet and four inches, you're going to have more than six hours. Do you, can you share that data? And again, usually we, every other.
Has there been any other applicant for a solar permit that's been required to provide that data? And if so, who provides that? Is there like, you know, someone, I mean, I provided the formula with, with the experts' information. You can certainly go and reverse engineer how I did it, but it's mostly been done by personal observation and working with a licensed builder. What's his name? Brad or Brian? You know, I've worked with him. I've told him what I want. He put this thing together. He said, you want solar panels? You wanna be able to access them, Rossman? Here's the garage you need. We talked about different heights. We talked about the obstructions. Good luck getting a builder to show up at a meeting like this, you know, when you've got, you've got so many other things going on with builders.
I'll ask you one more time, sir. Do you have numbers, actual numbers that can be attested to that says at eighteen feet, this is the amount of sufficient sun? And at twenty feet, four inches, this is the amount of sufficient sun that you can, numbers that you can share with us?
Yeah, so like I said, it's an eighteen percent difference is my, my best estimation is between eighteen and a hundred percent. Based on my personal observation, it'd be a hundred percent if those are covered with snow. Eighteen percent based on the difference in height. Here again, think about it. You know, if you have something that's low to the ground and there's an obstruction, when the angle of the sun is going to hit it, the higher up that object is, the sooner it's gonna be in the sunlight. You know, you're asking me to put tens of thousands of dollars of studies into this. Like, man, I wanna get to work on this and we've got, we've got the plan in place. You know, and you're asking for all this additional information. The builder is set to start on July eighth. We've already paid for the materials. The builder is set to start. If this isn't approved today, this plan doesn't happen.
So.
Because it'll be next year and we won't be here. We'll leave. We will leave Edina before we would wait another year to have this thing built. I mean, we waited months on this. Come on.
So you do have the numbers that you can share with us or you don't because you don't wanna spend another ten thousand dollars?
I mean, that's, I've shared pages of information. I've put in a hundred hours on this thing. And have you read the submissions that we've submitted?
So at, at eighteen feet, how many, how many hours and minutes of sunlight do you have?
Did you, did you read my submission?
At eighteen feet, how many hours and minutes?
Did you read my submission? Can we go back to exhibit number? Exhibit number, Rossman, exhibit number five, please. Set Agenda Page eighty-five. So if you scroll down just a little bit, here again, there's a formula contained at this link right here. The Renewable National Renewable Energy Laboratory map that will provide the formula that I used in addition to my personal observations to come up with these numbers, you know? Are you telling, I think you're telling me to hire an expert to get some numbers or something, you know? We shouldn't have to hire an expert when we've already hired a builder. I mean, any ten experts for this?
Do you have the numbers that you obtained by running that formula?
I, yeah, absolutely. Like I said, eighteen percent?
What's the actual, what's, what's the actual hours and minutes, please?
I don't have that data here in front of me, you know?
Okay.
I apologize. I don't have that data. What I do have is the data that I provided. We put in a lot of time into this. I know you want this granular level of detail, but this is contrary to the city of Edina is saying it's gonna expedite solar. All I see is a lot of roadblocks here.
I have one further question and this is on a different topic. Can you show us, you mentioned thirty to forty-five degrees. Can you show us in the, I looked at the plans and again, I'm not an expert on reading plans. Can you show us where it shows, reflex thirty to forty-five degree tilt?
I'm not an expert on reading plans either. I have to get a builder to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else with any questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Rossman. Oh, Commissioner Agnew.
Yeah, I do after as well.
And just building on that last question from the chair, do you just happen to know what the pitch is of this roof right now, what the percentage is?
Yeah, we've got that on the drawings. Have you, have you read our submissions? I believe that's in our submission. Perhaps the city planner could assist. I'm not a, I'm not a builder, so I don't know about pitch and stuff. I'm, I'm a citizen, okay? I've got experts for that. But I do know that the city engineer was out here. Perhaps that person was on the call.
And again, we're, we're all citizens too, and I don't think that we're all experts either. But I have reviewed the documents and I didn't see on there a percentage pitch. And I think that I would just like to, to have that information, right? To make sure that it's within that thirty to forty-five percent range that was recommended in the documents that you provided.
Is there some, is there someone in the, on this committee that can look at our plans and tell us what the pitch of the roof is? I mean, I've got stacks of documents here in front of me. I have no idea what page that would be on. Is there anyone that can read plans on this call?
I can pull up the applicant's middle here.
Yeah, I'm trying to find the plan in our, because there's like eight or nine things here. I'm trying to find where the actual plans are, so.
There's some information on the roof pitch over on the left-hand drawing. That was included with this applicant's middle.
Yeah.
You might wanna look at page eleven of the applicant's middle.
It looks like a twelve-twelve pitch to me.
How does that compare to the percentage that we were seeing?
That's a forty-five degree pitch.
Okay.
Commissioner Agnew, do you have any? Oh, we lost you for a moment. Do you have any further?
Nope, that was it for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Bennett, did you still have questions?
Yeah, I have questions and maybe more, you know, comments. And I'm also sympathetic here. Solar is very important to me. I, I actually utilize a lot of it for what I do professionally. So I'm very attuned to the challenges and constraints that exist naturally in the world. And I think that's where maybe we differ a little bit here. You know, the house that I was previously in is fully shaded and I'm not about to cut my trees down to make it happen optimally to get sunlight. And I, and I know you're in the same boat and, you know, Minnesota, just when you're talking about sunlight and, you know, degree and strength and intensity, we're not ideal compared to southern states either. So I think there's always going to be constraints that you're facing. And I don't think it's realistic to try to bend the law that we're subject to, to try to get, you know, your one hundred percent optimal situation, just because it's not realistic for what, what card you're dealt right now at your property. And that's just where I'm stuck. And, you know, I think even if you have eighteen percent, the constraints around you could change. The trees are gonna grow, you know, there's gonna be more blockage. Snow, if, if designed well at a forty-five degree pitch, should shed and you shouldn't have to ever rake that off if it's designed well. So, I mean, maybe, maybe one day after a big snowfall you have an issue, but.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah.
Do you, do you have a, right now though, do you have a question for the applicant? This is, I really wanna hear what you have to say as usual. But do you have a question at this point?
That's what I was trying to walk through. I, I feel like I've heard enough right now where I probably just have comments. But I think you guys addressed most of the questions. I guess the only thing I'd ask is, with the eighteen to twenty feet difference, are you clear about what future obstructions and obstacles that might happen in the future?
Yeah, Tracy and I were just talking about that. Thank you for your comments and thank you for using solar. It's really important. You know, so Tracy and I were just talking about the trees are growing. They're getting taller. So as we're trying to build this roof, and keep in mind, optimal for us would be twenty-five feet. You know, I'd be way up, you know, on top of our house, but we can't do that. So we're not going with the optimal situation. We're going with the lesser situation. Because of the specific array of trees and obstacles around our home, like I said, twenty feet, four inches, it's not the twenty-one feet that we got across the street, but it's, it's enough to give us that lift that's going to really make the difference with respect to these solar panels.
And being considerate of our neighbors.
And being, well, great point. And being considerate of our neighbors. You know, you talk about the Heritage Preservation Commission. We're, we're, we're facing this roof to the south because we know what they're gonna say. What's facing towards the street? Oh, we don't want that facing towards the street. So we're facing these towards the south. I understand what, you know, that'll be a different conversation for phase two. But we do have our mind thinking ahead to that Heritage Preservation Commission and that additional meeting where they're gonna be asking a lot of questions. So we're not just doing this willy-nilly. This is something we've spent a lot of time on. This is something we think about a lot. And this is something that we wish our neighbors and our community would support.
Yeah. I appreciate that answer. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, could I just jump in with a technical point here?
Sure, welcome. This is for everyone who's watching. This is Dave Kendall. He's an attorney for the city. Welcome, Mr. Kendall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted, this is not a major point, but I just wanted to point out that Mr. Rossman's been citing to Minnesota Statute three ninety-four point two-seven. That actually applies to counties and not to cities. But the language in the statute is materially the same in the statute that applies to cities. So that statute is four sixty-two point three-five-seven. So it doesn't change if your analysis. I just wanna make sure the, the commission is referring to the correct statute.
So that's the statute we were provided by the city planner's office. So if I got the statute wrong, I apologize. That's, that's the one we are getting.
Thank you. I, I had a further question for Mr. Rossman. Have you determined that the current roof is satisfactory to maintain the weight of solar panels?
The roof for the, for the, yes, that's what I've been confirmed with the builder about. Tracy's just talking to him yesterday morning, trying to see if he gets to appear at this hearing today, which he hasn't. But yes, he has confirmed for us that this is a solar garage. This, this is the intent of it. That's what that little room upstairs is for. And this is what the stairs are for. This is the plan.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say that in any of the plans, right? There's no, there are no notes in the plan about sufficient load for solar, right? I mean, you'd wanna get that in your warranty, wouldn't you?
Great point. This is phase one of the plan where we're building the garage and we're trying to get it high enough. Phase two is where we're gonna go put the solar panels on and solve for that, that snow issue. So no, we don't, we don't have every aspect of this worked out to the nth degree and I'm not denying that.
It's like any other.
Right, it's like any other project.
In a diner.
Right.
Any other home project, you do it in phases.
Go ahead.
Yeah, well, you do it in phases. And we've been assured that it can bear the weight of the solar panels. And obviously, the builder that we're gonna be using is not going to be the person who will be installing the solar panels. Or who we will be looking to for further advice.
Thank you. That's all I have. Anyone else? Well, this says I.
One question.
Anyone? Yeah. Commissioner Miranda? Yeah.
Yes. So on your table of Country Club District Attached Garage, yeah, statistics. It seems like all those garages that are taller than eighteen feet are, were built before twenty thirteen when the ordinance changed. Do you have any examples of garages that were built after that date?
We asked for that and we told that there were none. So we, and I think I mentioned earlier, I asked the city of Edina, I said, well, tell me the height of every garage in Country Club. That'd take like a year to get that data. So we agreed that we just use that, that sheet. My thought is, anyway, that's what we're gonna work on. Let's, let's use that sheet. That's what we agreed to use. I can't speculate further about the average height of garages here in the city of Edina or in Country Club.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Miranda. Anyone else? Commissioner Agnew?
Okay, last question. And so if, if we were to approve this variance, and you're saying right now, building the garage is phase one, what is the timeline for phase two or for whatever phase number it is in which the solar panels would be installed?
Great question. So no one's asking about the cost of the solar panels. We're looking at forty-five to sixty thousand dollars. I know there's tax credits and there's this and there's that, but that's gonna be the, the cost to us. And that's why I get so hacked off when I talk about putting an extra window in or timbering. It's like, man, this costs me a lot of money. But our timeline would be when we can save up the money for that. We're hoping to do that within the next two years. But here again, you know, we gotta get phase one done. I'd like to do that, you know, starting next year. But we need the garage now and we need to plan ahead, plan for the future. The future is solar. Let's build a garage that's compatible with the solar so that when we're ready to put those panels on, we can put them on. Thank you for your question.
Anyone else? Well, I'll go to the public hearing and then there can be more questions later. That, that could trigger, maybe people think of ones. So anyone listening, this is a public hearing. I use that phrase twice in the last ten seconds. Here's the information, and that means that people who are watching can give testimony of up to three minutes. So here's the information, if you'd like to call in and give testimony. That's one eight-hundred-three-seven-four-zero-two-two-one. Enter conference ID eight-two-eight-nine-one-eight-two and give the operator your name, address, and phone number. Press star one to be placed in the queue to speak. And the only thing we ask is that you try not to repeat something somebody, another caller may have said already. That, that, you know, hearing the same thing twice doesn't change its impact on us. We're very fact-driven. So I'll turn it over to one of our DANS and ask if we have anyone in line to call.
We do not, we do not have anyone in the queue at this moment. If we want to wait our customary minute or so, I'll come back on at eight fifty-eight and let you know. Eight, excuse me, eight twenty-eight.
Thank you, Dan.
It has been right around a minute and we do not have any callers in the queue.
Well, thank you, Dan. So that means we can close the public hearing. Would anyone be willing to make a motion to do so?
I move to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Agnew and we'll give a tie to Commissioner Berube and Commissioner Bennett on second meeting. Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote?
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartley?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Stroh?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Chair Numrav?
Thank you, Ms. Olson. So that closes the public hearing, which brings it back to the planning commission for discussion. Or more questions or a motion or any clarification. Would anyone like to kick us off? Commissioner Agnew?
I have one more question for, I believe, Emily, or staff maybe in general. If we were to approve this variance with the condition that solar panels be installed within X number of years, whether it's two or five or whatever, would there be any mechanism the city could use to enforce that? Or would that not make sense in this situation?
I would ask that the city attorney might weigh in on this question on what conditions can be placed on the project.
Mr. Chair, there have to be, there has to be a reasonable nexus between any conditions placed and the, the project. In this case, you know, I think Mr. Rossman is. you know, I think Mr. Rossman is saying that the purpose of this variance is for the installation of solar panels. So I think you could place a condition on the variance that solar panels be installed because there's a nexus between that and the reasons for the variance application. So I think that'd be a possibility, yes.
And then I guess further, like what, what mechanism? Like if the garage is already built, right? Like what could the city do in that situation if solar panels weren't eventually added?
That's a difficult question because, you know, variances do run with the land. And so it's difficult to revoke a variance. So I guess the mechanism would be, it would be in violation of that. It'd be a code violation. It would be non-conforming. But it'd be difficult to enforce that condition. It's not a condition that you can implement prior to construction of the, of the project, so.
Thank you. That was my only question.
Yeah. I mean, the harshest answer is if something is built without a variance, you can't demand that it be torn down. But this would be built with a variance, but then I guess just not in compliance with that variance. So it would be a difficult situation. I mean, you could attempt to have it torn down, but obviously that would be difficult and destructive.
Thank you, Commissioner Attorney Kendall. Commissioner Agnew, do you have anything further?
I do have comments to make, but should I open it up for any other questions or make my comments?
It's fair to make your comments. But again, other commissioners can also ask questions or make comments. But this is planning commission discussion, so, you know, please go forward.
So ultimately, like, I love the idea of solar panels and going solar. And I don't think that, given the height of other garages in this area, that this is vastly out of character. You know, I, in any variance review, I think that we'd really expect to see expert evidence, whether it's a civil engineer or someone. In this situation, I'm inclined to support this variance. And, you know, I really do appreciate you doing your own research. I really can't begin to estimate what it would cost to have really that expert come out and do that. I wish you had built out the case with the data about the real impact that two feet would have. You know, I think we're estimating anywhere from eighteen percent to a hundred percent. And I just think that I want to see more of that data. I think it would be a lot easier to approve this if both phases were happening right now, right? Like if we were, we're really approving this garage with the combination of the solar panels. Because for me, it would, it would only be the existence of the solar panels that would make me want to support this. You know, if we built the garage and, you know, down the road, it came out that the solar panels never happened, like that would be really unfortunate because in my mind, this variance would be granted solely because of the solar panels. And so it makes it really hard to approve something like this when, when it's not coupled together at the same time. So that's, that's my general thought right now.
Commissioner Agnew? Anyone else? Commissioner Berube?
Yeah, so I also, I support solar panels. I think we need more of them. And so I applaud your effort. But quite frankly, you haven't really demonstrated the need for, you know, a twenty-foot, you know, you've said you have a sense because you sit in your office and see the sun, but in my mind, maybe eighteen is good enough. So I, there's no evidence in my mind for granting the variance. But I appreciate your efforts.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have some comments.
Great. Commissioner Bennett, I don't see you, but thanks for speaking up.
Oh, do you see me now? No? Okay, well.
I don't, but everyone else, oh, there you are. Everyone else looks very happy with your image, so go forward.
There we go. Yeah, this is a tough one. I totally support, you know, I'm sympathetic to the applicant because, I mean, I've wanted solar for, like, the house I live in now and we're going to do it in our future house just because we, we've turned the roof and made it face south and have clear coverage above the trees. But we did that within the confines of the existing code. And so, you know, I think sometimes we're stuck and there's constraints that are in place that limit the ability to optimize something we really care about. And it gets very frustrating and I can totally see where you're coming from. But at the same time, just practically speaking, and, you know, having installed solar in smaller applications and, you know, I think you have a favorable roof pitch for snow shedding where you don't necessarily need to count on having access to a ladder to brush it off. If your roof was at a lower pitch, I'd be a little more sympathetic for you, but forty-five degrees is, is above optimal for the, the slope of the solar panels with the sun. But it's optimal for shedding snow. So I think you're gonna be able to get quite a bit, you know, at the eighteen feet. And although you might have two feet, that's better. Throughout the day, it's hard to tell without a study how much coverage you're actually losing with that two feet. And I think I'm still erring on the side of not supporting this, but I'm definitely waffling there. So I appreciate the passion and bringing forth the conversation around solar because hopefully we can make it easier to make this stuff happen. But sometimes the constraints, be it natural, like you're facing, are just what you have to deal with no matter where you live, so, thank you.
I will say that I think the pitch will be different if it's not at the twenty feet. Because her calculations were done off of what the builder had proposed. So I don't think they will be at a forty-five degree angle. Maybe she could jump back in here and re-figure that for us. And with the previous commissioner's comments, what I want to say about, you know, it would be optimal if we did everything at once. And originally, that was kind of our plan. But then building materials went sky-high. We looked over a year ago at building a garage and it was maybe thirty-five thousand. And now it's closer to seventy to build the same structure. And so therefore, that eats up any money that you have to put toward solar. It's, it's just the way the world is right now.
Sure. Thank you, Mrs. Rossman.
Appreciate that. And I had one other comment that dragged my memory. Based off of timing and process, typically, when, when you're installing solar, or at least in Minnesota, a lot hinges on getting credits and working with a consultant type of company. So usually you don't have this stuff hammered out ahead of time. So just so people, I guess, you know, fellow commissioners, understand that to have all that figured out ahead of time is pretty unrealistic.
Thank you.
Also, if your sticker shocks, forty-five to sixty, sixty K, I'm a little, I'm questioning how many solar panels you're planning to install. And I have my email as public knowledge, so you can reach out to me. There's, I know of lots of people who have done it for much less. And I know that industry isn't as inflated as lumber. But anyways, just, just a couple of thoughts to share.
Any further, any further planning commissioners with any comments or questions? Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'm terribly concerned about climate change and I think solar panels are a great way to address that. Looking at the state statute, talking about practical difficulties including inadequate access to direct sunlight, solar energy system, and the absence of any kind of data, I think it's much more believable that a, that a variance in terms of setbacks would be, provide more light, but, you know, two feet higher when, you know, trees grow. It just seems like it's hard to believe unless there's more evidence. So I'm taking against this because I don't think there's really enough evidence here.
I would point out that the buildings that are gonna, you know, that aren't gonna change in size, namely forty-six twenty-eight Bruce is the primary obstruction to the access, direct access to the sun. And like you point out, Minnesota statute specifically calls out solar energy systems. Our legislature is telling us, approve things like this. Don't, don't block them. The City of Edina is saying, we're open for solar. Come on, in three days and we'll approve your process. And now we're being totally gonna hire another expert to measure the days in the sun and my, my data isn't good enough. I don't, I don't know what we can do and how much longer.
Mr. Rossman, could I ask another question? We've definitely heard the, how, how much, how much solar do you intend to install?
Seventeen panels.
Seventeen panels, how many kilowatts is that?
And that's in exhibit number, Rossman exhibit number two. It's a six kilowatt, seventeen panel system, six thousand four hundred and forty kilowatt hours. If you want to pull up that, page seventy-five of the agenda is the, the system that we're being suggested. But it sounds like I might be getting taken for a ride and might be calling someone on this, on this committee to talk about pricing.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to say something I think is similar to what other commissioners said, but maybe a slightly different angle. I feel very pulled between two strong values here that I think are somewhat in conflict. And one is, I think, I think everyone is a big fan of solar. I heard one commissioner has or is putting it on his house. I'd given some thought to it. Started having jealousies. I drive by and see people with solar and I, I, I think it's awesome. And so that's, that's, that's a value I have and I think it's a value that many commissioners have something because, you know, I think we're all concerned about climate change and we like the effect that. The other, the conflict, however, is I think as a planning commissioner, I feel a duty to the other residents of the city to run a fair, a fair and transparent process and that, that we follow the same standards for all applicants. And this is the first application that I've received a request for, that I can remember, where I've received a request for variance that didn't have data supporting, supporting it. It was more, I looked out the window and I've done some measurements. I can't tell you what they are, but I know it's what I need. And it could be, but I don't think, I don't think as a planning commissioner that I, you know, not everybody in the city agrees with, you know, providing, you know, flexibility for solar. But I think everyone in the city wants us to try to run a process that's the same for everyone. And, and I don't, I'm not prepared to create an exception without getting the data, unfortunately. If I had the data, might make a difference. Also, I will note, we're not an architectural review board, but I, if you can't tell, I have a lot of regard for Commissioner Bartling's skills. And if she thinks that it's doable, it's doable. I also have a lot of regard for Commissioner Bennett's engineering knowledge. And if he thinks some of the need as it stated, isn't, probably isn't needed, I have a lot of regard for that. I mean, I've learned a lot from working with Commissioner Bennett. Not only is he a good engineer, but he really explains it, in my opinion, in lay language very well. So I, much as I would really like to be the guy that says, yeah, I support solar. I support solar. I help get it done. I can't support this one without additional data to show why the variance is needed because I think my job's take a bigger picture and make sure our process is fair to everyone in the city. So I kind of regret that, but that's kind of where I'm landing. So with that, does anyone else have any further questions or comments?
I do have a, just a statement, a question. So if we go ahead and hire an architect or an engineer and pay for these folks and they come in and they say, well, for this to happen, the garage needs to be twenty-five feet, will the planning commission then take that under consideration? Because then we have, we have paid for all of these engineers to come in. At this point, we're being told with what we have supplied you is sufficient. And so if we move forward, because it sounds like you're gonna, you're gonna deny it. But if we move forward and we hire all of these different specialists, then I want to know if they come in at twenty-five feet, are you going to approve it?
Yeah, so Mrs. Rossman, I think that's a very fair question to ask. And I'm glad you, was, was, was someone else going to speak there?
I will after you, Ian.
Okay, so at first I heard you say, would we consider it? And the, and the answer to that is absolutely. I mean, if you ask for a variance, we would. Now, just to give you a little bit of logistics, I'm gonna ask perhaps the staff plane department. You have an option here. One is you can ask us to take a vote. Yeah, you actually have three options here before I answer your, your bigger question, which is a fair question to ask. But you have three options here. One is you can pull tonight's application and come back. And then we'll get to your question in just a second. Your second option is to have us vote. And it'll be, I'm gonna allow you the choice on whether you want us to do that or not. Have us vote. If we vote no, then you have two branches with that. You can either wait a year to come back to us or you can appeal to the city council. In which case, if they approve it, you're golden. If they don't approve it, then you'll have probably another year from that date. And I, I'm going to ask actually City Planner Director Kerry Teague just to confirm what I said. And then I want to answer your question.
Yeah, I would confirm. Those are, those are the options. Yep.
Now, with regard to your, your, your questions, really, you know, it's your sixty-four dollar question, to use the old cliche. But it's probably more than sixty-four dollars in this case. Is, it's hard to say. We have to see it. It's really, without seeing the data, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to judge in advance. I understand, I understand what you're saying. I understand why you ask. You know, we'd want to see something that shows eighteen doesn't work and whatever number they come in with does work. Now then we're going to agenda, that would help, you know. We, we do the same, we do the same analysis. Can a reason, is that needed to accomplish the goal? Is it within the character of the neighborhood and that sort of thing? I, I don't, you know, I turned to Planner Teague, but any other commissioner, just to confirm that I said, but I'll also allow, I mean, Commissioner Bennett wanted to say something, but I don't know if we can judge it in advance and say, yes, that would work. And Planner Teague, is that fair?
That's fair. I think that's well-stated.
Thank you, Planner Teague. Commissioner Bennett wanted to say something, but, you know, if you want to, Jimmy, go ahead. Anyone else also?
Yeah. I mean, I feel like the more I chew on this, I wouldn't say my mind's changing necessarily, but, you know, I think what makes this difficult, Ian, and you alluded to, is there's no data to back this up. However, we're talking about the use, right? So we're usually not supposed to make a decision on use alone, but is the use reasonable? And I think we all agree that the use is reasonable, why they're doing this. And I don't think you, you know, customarily, if there is a use provided, someone needs to provide a bunch of data on that use, we're to take into account the other things. And I think, you know, Commissioner Agnew brought it up. We're talking two feet here. And so, I mean, yes, I, I believe that there's natural constraints and two feet might not mean a lot, but it also can help quite a bit. If it's eighteen percent or if it's eight percent, I mean, that's still toward, toward the positive, net positive for the community. And so I think that's why we're struggling. And in the case of solar, even if the builder were here, most builders aren't well-versed in it. Most citizens aren't. And I deal with it and I'm not that well-versed in it compared to others. And that's why the process usually is, if you're, the code and everything jives, you embark consultant that then, you know, taps into the net, the credits that are available to you and you work together and partner. And that's wrapped into that bill. So to have that all done. So to have that all done in advance is kind of, um, I would say unusual and that, you know, it's kind of cart before the horse when it comes to solar. So to ask an applicant to provide all that to us today, to me actually seems, um, impractical. And I think for that reason, you know, I'm more in support of this and I don't think it changes the char-
Commissioner Bennett, we, you faded in a little bit. I, I think we lost you after you said, I don't think it changes the char-, and then you went silent.
Sorry, yeah, it's just, I, I don't, I don't believe it changes the character of the neighborhood, the two feet. For me, that's like the principle by which I make a lot of these close call decisions. And I think the use and having data for the use. And so to me, it's not changing the character of the neighborhood. That's why the heritage preservation board exists really for that area. They've okayed it at least without the solar, so we don't know there. It's down to that principle and then also knowing what the reasonable use is, I, I can, I can be on board with supporting this, um, this two-foot deviation. And I, I think some of it is that process, right? Like, do they provide a lot of data? I think it's unreasonable to expect, um, our citizens to, you know, have a ten thousand dollar design and engineering type of fee, um, to, to vet out their, the extent of their use. The use is reasonable, right? So, and I don't know how others see that. Um, but I think we're so focused right now on the use and usually we aren't. So, um, that's just where I'm at right now.
Thank you, Christian. But Christian Strauss, I think you wanted to say something?
Yeah, just a final, um, to the applicant, there's obviously no, there's certainly no denial of the, the passion and the commitment, you know, of their presentation. But I, I'd like to extend my appreciation to the commission for their comments and their insight, because I think I do have a clear direction that I intend to go. And it's really based on the insight that I, um, got from, from the deliberations tonight here. Um, I, I really, the, the staff has, you know, um, taken a position to, to deny this. Um, I have not heard a compelling reason for that twenty feet, for the reasons that the, the commission themselves have elaborated. So, um, that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Mr. Strauss, I believe everyone's had a chance to speak. I, you know, if you have any, if you have any new comments, please share. Otherwise, I would ask if anyone has a, a motion, uh, to approve or deny the variance or, or, or additional comments that haven't been, if something new struck you.
Chair, I think you are going to give, um, the applicant an option for us to not call this to a vote?
Thank you. I believe I did say that. So, Mr. and Mrs. Rossman, I, 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 I don't know if you're available. Do you, so I'll, I'll come back to you and ask you, uh, thanks to, thanks to Vice Chair Agnew, um, would you like us to vote on this or would you like to pull it and review your options further?
We need, we need you to vote on it today. The, the builder is starting July eighth with this project. Like I said, we've already put a substantial down payment on it. We have a very narrow window when the builder can start July eighth. If we don't hit that window because you're going to deny this, um, and the city council denies our appeal, then we won't be able to do this project till next year. You've effectively ended solar in country club in Edina yet again for twenty-twenty-one. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you for, thank you for answering clearly. So, um, we can take a vote on whether to approve or deny this. Would anyone like to make a motion for one of those? Commissioner Bennett, I-
I'll make a motion. So I move to approve the variance as requested, subject to the condition that a solar system is installed within three years.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? So, um, in a, in a moment, Ms. Olson, will you do a vote? An "aye" vote is a motion to approve the variance. A "nay" vote is a motion to deny the variance. Um, or is it not, actually, let me rephrase that. That's not, that's not technically correct. An "aye" vote is to approve the variance as stated by Commissioner Bennett. A "nay" vote is to not approve the variance as stated by Commissioner Bennett. That's a little different than a denial, but it's, are, are you with me? Anyone want me to say that a different way? Okay, uh, Ms. Olson, can you do a roll vote? An "aye" vote is to approve it, a "nay" vote is to not approve the proposal, but there could be another vote next.
Before you take a vote, sorry to interrupt, I might offer that we provide some findings for approval. Um, and I can offer some if that, if the commission is okay with that.
Yeah, please do include, yeah, please do.
So I would suggest that the proposal and the use is appropriate, given the solar panels that are proposed to be put on the garage. Practical difficulty is the inability to locate the panels on the house and maintain those solar panels in the future, that there are taller garages that exist in the district and that this wouldn't be out of character in the district.
Support those.
I do as well.
Thank you, Planner Teague. Okay, so just to restate it, an "aye" vote is to support the variance, uh, with the findings stated by Planner Teague. Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote, please?
Thank you. Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Nay.
Commissioner Strauss?
Nay.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Nay.
Chair Namarov?
Nay. And so my count was three "yes" and four "nays," is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we need to, thank you for everyone who voted, uh, to dispose of a matter, you know, to conclude our deliberations over matter. My understanding, I'll confirm Planner Teague, that we need a majority of "yes" to vote for some dispositive resolution. Is that correct, Planner Teague?
Yes, I think that would be appropriate here.
So in that case, someone could make a different resolution for approval of the variance or a resolution for denial or, or something else, uh, you know, creativity. Would anyone like to do so?
I, I'll move to deny the variance based on the applicant not showing evidence that they need the incremental height for either solar or for anything else.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Is there any further, okay, so, is there any further discussion of this motion? So let me restate it. An "aye" vote now would be to deny the variance based on, based on there being inadequate findings or inadequate data within the application. Is that fair, Commissioner Berube?
In, in addition to the findings in the staff report?
Correct. There, there's no evidence that the extra height is needed.
Okay, an "aye" vote is, is, is to deny it based on there not being evidence that the variance is needed and the, uh, other findings within the staff report. Commissioner Berube, is, is that fair? And, and, and I believe Commissioner Strauss or Commissioner Miranda seconded, are you comfortable with that? Okay.
Yes.
Um, any further discussion? Ms. Olson, could you do a, a vote? A roll vote, please.
Commissioner Agnew?
Nay.
Commissioner Bartling?
Nay.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Nay.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Chair Namarov?
Aye. So the motion before the planning commission tonight has been denied, the variance request has been denied. Um, the applicant does have the right, and I understand, will appeal to the city council. Um, the, the appeal needs to be within ten days. Planner Teague, I think we have a holiday coming up in here. What, what can, are you able to state the date by when the appeal should be filed?
Oh, I don't have that code in front of me, but we can provide the applicant, um, the specific date that he would need to provide that, um, appeal by.
Okay, all right.
I might be able to speak on that if you'd like.
Sure, that'd be great.
Um, if this was something that was, if it's too, if it's required to be in the sun current, um, we would need it, we would need the appeal by one PM tomorrow for it to be on the July twenty-first council meeting. If it does not require the sun current, um, then that's not the case.
Yeah, so it, it would, we do need to notice in the sun current, so that would be the deadline for the July twenty-first, but they still do have ten days to appeal. It would just be put on a later city council agenda.
Correct.
May I, this, this is Commissioner Bartling for the applicants. Um, as I stated, I just want to quickly state again, if you lop off the top of your garage, you won't even need a variance. And if you want to talk to your builder, I would do that, but it's basically just a flat blunt top that's about probably a foot wide, two feet wide, depends on, uh, what it's created for your height, but I just want to put that out there. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Um, and, and good luck to the applicant with their appeal or with whatever they end up building. Uh, sure, it'll be an improvement. Yeah, for the planning commission, we have one more public hearing tonight, and that is a conditional use permit with variances for sixty-two hundred Interlocken Boulevard and, which is also colloquially known as Interlocken Country Club. Appearing for the, uh, city tonight is, uh, Mr. Teague.
And if I could just mention before Commissioner, uh, Planning Commissioner, uh, Director Teague jumps on, I'm going to recuse myself from this, um, section of the meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Berube.
I want to put that on the public record.
Okay, thank you, Chair, members of the commission. I'm going to leave my camera on and hope that we don't have any glitches. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes, very, very well.
All right, excellent. So this property, it is the Interlocken Country Club, as mentioned, located on Interlocken Boulevard. The area that we're specifically looking at is really the west side of the golf course and country club. So note on this graphic that the country club owns, um, five residential parcels at the end of Waterman. Uh, this, this house shown here at sixty-two twenty has been removed, and I'll have an aerial that shows that in a minute. Uh, sixty-three oh five and sixty-three hundred would be removed as part of this proposal and the existing homes at sixty-three oh four and sixty-three oh nine would remain. The idea here is to use those lots to kind of serve as a buffer, um, from the improvements that are being proposed here and the neighborhood. So this, this is an updated aerial that shows that home at sixty-two twenty that's been removed. They've got kind of a, a dirt parking lot there at this time. So this property is zoned R1, single dwelling unit district. So within Edina, all of our, um, golf courses, schools, churches, they have that same R1 zoning. Um, golf clubs are a permitted use within that zoning district, same as a, a single dwelling unit, um, a single family home. So those are permitted uses within this, within the R1 district. The comprehensive plan has the majority of the country club guided as public, semi-public. Um, note here, this big blue area, this is the Edina Country Club. So our private golf courses have that designation, yet in the comprehensive plan, our public golf courses like Braemar, formerly Fred Richards Golf Course, those have an open space and parks designation. That said, all of those uses, again, are allowed in the R1 zoning. So despite the different land use classifications, there are uses that are allowed within that, uh, within the existing R1 district. So this is the pyramid of discretion that we often look at when we're looking at projects. Most of the projects, um, that we're looking at or that I'm presenting are comprehensive plan amendments, rezoning, where city has a lot of discretion. Our variances and conditional use permits, not as much discretion. As you can see, conditional use permit almost gets up to that red area where, um, if you meet city code requirements, you're entitled that use. With conditional use permits, we can put certain conditions to mitigate what's being proposed, or the impacts on adjacent properties. So to go through some of the detail of what's proposed here, what the country club would like to do is add a, a new parking lot. So there's a home located right here that would be removed and a home right here that would be removed. These are those two existing homes owned by the country club, those would remain. So there would be an additional practice area here and then this new parking lot. The, uh, the country club, um, is experiencing a shortage of parking with its members and employees. They have been leasing space down the block, um, across Blake to the west where employees park and then walk down Waterman in order to access the club. So what they'd like to do is get all of the employees the ability to park within, uh, within the confines of the country club, and it does provide additional, uh, parking for members itself. So here's a rendering of what the project would look like when completed. So again, here's the parking area and the practice area on the south side. They're proposing, um, evergreen landscaping around the perimeter to provide a buffer for the headlights to the cars, screening of the parking lot. You can see they, they, the parking lot would be lit. These, these lights would be required to meet city code. They would have to be, uh, downcast lighting and with a foot candle of no more than point five at the, uh, at the adjacent, or at the, the perimeter of the site at the lot lines. Another view, um, part of the request here or part of this overall project, the, um, they, the country club would be rebuilding the end of Waterman and constructing a new cul-de-sac. They would also provide a gate at the end. Um, what they'd like to do here is concentrate the main entrance, which is off of Interlocken for employees and members, um, to access the club to help for security, um, also to prevent, um, or at least reduce traffic on Waterman. So if there's, that main access would be used off Interlocken. There, there may be some, currently deliveries do, uh, enter the club, um, through Waterman. They would be restricted somewhat. There may be some deliveries to the club where they can't get in off of Interlocken due to the, the curve of the road. So there may be some limited, um, deliveries off of Waterman in the future. Uh, the, the, the club has been working with our engineering and emergency services. Um, emergency services would still need to, to get in here from time to time. So, um, police, fire would have to have the ability to open that gate with some kind of a, a NOC system. Um, so any condition of, should this project be approved, um, that would be one of the conditions of approval. Here's another look at the gate. You can see the, uh, the landscaping that's also proposed, uh, to provide that screening. So this request requires a conditional use permit. So within the, again, the R1 zoning district, parking lots are a conditionally permitted use. So that's really the, the emphasis of this, or that is what's being requested here. And also the expansion of the, the boundary line to include those residential lots. Um, so the primary issue is the conditional use permit criteria met, and staff believes that that criteria is met. Um, the proposed plan meets all city code provisions, you know, in terms of, of setbacks. Again, golf courses are a permitted use in the R1 district. Uses accessory to a golf course, like the tennis, tennis court, swimming pool, driving ranges, those are allowed, all, all allowed as accessory uses. And again, parking areas are a conditionally permitted use. Uh, this just quickly demonstrates that all setbacks are met. The nearest, so this graphic demonstrates, um, this is where the parking lot would be located. So the nearest single family home that's not owned by the country club would be about a hundred feet away along Waterman and to the north and west, a little over two hundred feet, um, to the nearest home in that direction. Um, secondly, the, uh, again, the main golf course has that public semi-public. the, uh, again, the main golf course has that public semi-public land use designation, and the single family lots have that low density designation. A comprehensive plan amendment is not needed, again, as all of those uses that exist on the site are allowed within that zoning district. Uh, third, does the proposal meet the, the specific conditional use permit criteria? And those are that the project would not have an undue adverse impact on governmental facilities, utilities, services, or existing or improved, uh, proposed improvements, would generate traffic within the capacity of the street serving the property, would not have an undue adverse impact on the public health, safety, or welfare, would not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of other property within the city vicinity, and conforms to all the applicable restrictions and conditions within the zoning district. Um, so, uh, staff does believe that that criteria is met. Again, police and fire can access the site via Waterman as, as today. Um, the utilities that serve this site, um, are, are all provided. Um, the impact on Waterman, there would be a reduction of traffic within that, within this area. Um, delivery trucks, there would be some limited, uh, delivery trucks in that area. Uh, we don't believe that it would impact the public health, safety, or welfare. Again, the project, the, the parking lot specifically where the conditional use is asked, would be well screened. The city forester has reviewed the plans and has made some recommendations. On that west side of the parking lot, he's suggesting the, the evergreen plantings that are proposed there, uh, be planted at six feet tall rather than four as proposed now, to again, help provide that, that screen. The applicant is agreeable to that condition. Um, and again, parking lots are allowed within the R1 districts. We, so it's not uncommon in the R1 district with school parking lots, church parking lots, and again, golf course parking lots. Um, we believe that the improvements would enhance the area and really provide a, a more clear buffer for, or boundary of the, of the country club. The lighting would be required to meet city code, and, and again, there's no variances that are requested here. Um, this has been posted on Better Together for a few weeks, and as noted in the report in your, in your, uh, planning commission packet, we had about 150 responses, um, both for and against. Um, those that are in favor of the project, uh, some of the comments, um, kind of the common theme comments throughout, um, that, uh, they believe that the plan is thoughtfully done. It would reduce traffic on Waterman, eliminate congestion. Um, the country club is an asset to the community. Uh, there would be an improvement in the storm water infiltration. I didn't point out, but there is a, a storm water, um, component to this. Um, employees can park on the site, so employees don't have to cross Blake Road in order to access, uh, the property. So there's some safety there, additional security for the club. Um, members have been having trouble parking, um, during the busiest times. Um, that this is an improvement aesthetically, and it's best to have parking onsite and not spill out into the neighborhood. Those, uh, comments that were against the project believe that it will change the character of the area. It would depreciate property values, that it is eliminating some affordable housing at the end of Waterman. It's destroying the natural environment, especially the wildlife within this area. Um, they have a concern for traffic on Waterman. It's eliminating green space. Um, some referenced behavior within the club as a concern. Um, that the club has, uh, let some of those, those single family homes that they exo- that they own deteriorate, and they've, they've become rundown. Uh, there was suggestions, a couple of comments about that the club should build a two-level parking ramp rather than a freestanding, um, and concern over noise in the parking lot. So with that, uh, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined within your staff report. And the applicant is here for a presentation as well, but I will stop there and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you Planner Teague. Well, members of the planning commission, Commissioner Strauss, will you kick us off, please?
Yes, um, Carrie, I, just to go through, the, so the, the, the current situation, um, is operating under a conditional use permit, uh, and it meets, it meets all the requirements under the conditional use permit.
That's, that's correct. Most recently, there was a conditional use permit for the new maintenance building, just to the north of the improvements that we're talking about today, and they received a conditional use permit for that as well.
So they're expanding mostly to the west, so that's the, the need to, um, review the conditional use permit because it's additional area, but the same uses.
Correct. It's all the same uses. It's for the construction of a new parking lot that requires the conditional use permit, in addition to the expansion, um, utilizing those single family homes.
And I always find that decision pyramid to be very, um, useful. Um, and that's clearly in that yellow, upper yellow zone where, where, I mean, less kind of flexibility. Um, so that, that's clear. And then you made a comment that there would be decreased traffic on Waterman. Um, is that because employees using the new lot would be accessing that lot via the Interlocken access? And so instead of parking in the neighborhood, walking into the property on Waterman, that usage, that, that habit would change?
Yes, that's exactly right. So that gate would be closed during the normal business hours. So employees coming to the club would use that main entrance and, um, move into the site and park within, within the area that you're looking at today.
Do you have any sense of how many vehicles, I'm assuming employees, were parking on what would be the public street then? I mean, is there any?
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's probably a question that the, the, uh, the country club can answer, but the times I was out there, just reviewing conditions and taking a look, each time I was out there, I, I witnessed employees parking in the church and then walking down Waterman.
Well, ladies, I mean, what I'm saying, they're, they're bringing their parking needs onto their own property then, in that sense.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Strauss, Commissioner Bennett?
Quick question. Carrie, can you, can you clarify? I, I'm, I believe I'm pretty clear on it, but just the before and after condition again of that gate, and who will use that gate in the future, and what that entrance was, I guess, subject to beforehand, before this proposed use?
Yeah, so the, the condition today is there's just free access into the club off of Waterman. There's, there's no gate. Anybody can drive in. Um, so the, the gate would, would prevent that. Those that would be able to access would be certain deliveries where there may be a, a larger, uh, truck that can't make that maneuver off of Interlocken would come in this way. Um, and police and emergency services. You know, that there may be the occasion, and, and Joel Livgood, the applicant, the GM for the club is here, um, but could answer in more detail. But there may be special events where the gate is open, where the access may be utilized from time to time. But the, the, um, the majority of the time, that gate would be closed.
Okay. Thank you. Yep, that's what I just wanted, uh, firm up. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Uh, Carrie, um, at a summary level, and I know we'll get into this later, but is, is it, the, regarding the conditions for approval, were, can the, can the reasons against be grouped into two buckets? Basically, um, people saying that approval would be against public welfare, and two, saying approval would be against the comprehensive plan? Are there any other kind of categories? If you're going to line the comments up, categorize the comments under the, you know, criteria for a CUP, would that be kind of where they'd line up?
It's really lining up against the conditional use permit criteria. So those, um, what is it? Five items that I referenced, uh, or maybe six items. You have to make a finding that those conditions are not met. So it's a, it's a, it's a more difficult standard.
Yes, so, you know, of all the complaints, though, of all the, of all the six factors, it seems, it seems to me, just, you know, just asking, it seems to you also, and I have a, I have a follow-up question, that a lot of the comments fall into two buckets. One is that this project, um, does harm, or, or, you know, does have a negative effect on public welfare. That's one of the criteria. And second, that it doesn't comply with the comprehensive plan. And, you know, as opposed to, you know, I mean, there, there's six different factors, uh, you know, like, like, there haven't been any comments really necessarily about an undue adverse impact on governmental facilities, utilities, services, or existing or proposed improvements, for example, right?
Yeah, it's, yeah, so I think that's fair. It's really about that condition number three, that does not have an undue adverse impact on the public health, safety, and welfare. So that would have to be the finding that the planning commission would make.
Okay.
It's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff believes.
Thank you. And I, I'll, I'll, I'll get, I'm, I'm going to come back to the comprehensive plan in a moment. And so for, for that number three, because it's a CUP with limited discretion, what would, you know, maybe not with this one necessarily, but what types of, you know, maybe, and speak more generally, what types of things, and this, maybe this is a question for Mr. Kendall, I don't know, but what types of things, um, are typical for findings of things not, that are adverse impact on public welfare?
Yeah, I really don't have experience with, um, denying conditional use permits when all other code requirements are met. So it's a difficult standard. It, it might be, uh, good if, if, um, Mr. Kendall chimed in on that. You know, part of the thinking is, the uses are allowed. There's, they're throughout the city. Parking lots associated with permitted uses, like churches, schools, and golf courses. So it's a difficult to make a finding that this parking lot would have an adverse impact on those neighboring properties when we have this kind of use all across town.
That makes sense. I'm just, I'm just.
Just referring to the parking lot.
I, I, I'm at, I'm at the stage of education at this point, like, like, you know, I mean, maybe CUPs are almost never turned on. I'm just wondering if there's like an example of, well, see, this would be the type, you know, maybe it's a, an extreme example, but this would be the type of adverse impact on public welfare that could result in a, you know, I, I don't know what it would be, you know? And maybe, maybe that can't be answered. So maybe we, we will, maybe we'll just have to work our way through it and decide whether the comments in every commissioner's mind amount to not consistent, or, you know, or adverse impact on public welfare. Well, that's the applicant, too, to address this. Um, can you, and then maybe on the comprehensive plan section, can you, uh, explain that a little bit more, why you think it does meet the comprehensive plan? Golf courses are, um, part of the comprehensive plan, uh, and, and how does that bootstrap into parking lots? Why is, why does that bring a parking lot along with it?
Um, well, the, the property is zoned R1, same as single family homes. The use is permitted within an R1 zone. Um, so we believe it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. We have these differing designations for uses within the R1 district, as I mentioned. Churches, schools, um, parks have differing designations within the comprehensive plan, but they're still all part of that R1 zoning district.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Any other, any other commissioners right now with questions for staff? Commissioner Bennett, and Commissioner Miranda Neck.
So Carrie, could I open any golf course on my property, technically?
Uh, yeah, yeah. So it's a permitted use, but if you were to put in a parking lot, you'd need a conditionally permitted use.
All right. I just, I just want to put things in perspective. Thanks.
Yeah.
I don't think you could charge for it, however, but, okay. Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, so, so when it says is consistent with the comprehensive plan, so, so the comprehensive plan, the, the part that you're talking about mostly is, uh, literally the land use itself. Um, but the comprehensive plan, you know, as required by the Met Council, is many, many chapters. And, um, are there other parts of the comprehensive plan that this could be violating?
Um, none that I can think of.
I mean, I'm not asking you to tell me what they, what they would be, but I'm just saying, if, if there, if there are parts of the comprehensive plan that are other than literally the land use designations, that one map, you know, could we find for that?
Well, it's really comes down to, is an amendment to the comprehensive plan necessary? And are you going to admit, amend the plan in regard to a statement about the environment or something like that? When we talk about consistency with the comprehensive plan, it's more about the land use. And is it allowed? Is it consistent with, um, with those land uses? Not into the, not so much the detail.
Okay, so would it require an amendment to the comprehensive plan, is what?
This would not require an amendment. It's a use that's allowed under existing zoning.
Right, but I mean, that's the definition for when we say is consistent with the comprehensive plan. We're looking to see whether we think this would require an amendment.
Right, and, and since we do have Attorney Kendall here, we could, maybe I could ask him to weigh on this, because that was a pretty common, I don't want to say comments theme, but we did receive several comments in regard to the comprehensive plan.
Well, thank you, members of the commission. I, I guess I would just say that, yeah, you, you can look at it in terms of whether you'd be required to make a comprehensive plan amendment. If you feel that this is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, then you could still amend the comprehensive plan to make it consistent. Um, staff is opining that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, but if you feel it's not, that doesn't mean that the use could never occur. It just means it would require a comprehensive plan amendment. Did that answer your question? No?
Uh, maybe. It's, it's pretty fuzzy. I'm not a lawyer.
Well, you know, the comprehensive plan is, you know, I mean, there, it's written somewhat generally, uh, you know, it's, I think it's intended to be that way. So when you ask whether it's possible that there are portions of the comprehensive plan that this would be inconsistent with, staff has not located any. Um, but I suppose it's possible, but I, I'm not aware of any at this time. But if you did find a provision that was inconsistent, your option would be to amend the comprehensive plan to make it consistent.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for staff at this time?
So, um, I'd like to welcome, and I look forward to hearing from Mr. Livinggood, but, and I hope I, did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yes, sir.
Welcome. Thank you for joining us. And now, thank you. If I may impose on you, however.
Sure.
I'd like to ask, and I'll ask everyone else, it's, we, we've been here for two and a half hours now, and we actually had an earlier meeting. I want to ask, and maybe not, if it's okay with Mr. Livinggood, and if this, if the planning commission wants, does anyone need a five-minute break? If that's okay with Mr. Livinggood. Maybe I should ask that first.
No, absolutely. Okay. I've been listening with you, so, uh, five-minute break is just fine if those would like.
Thank you. Does then, does anyone, would anyone like, would the planning commission like to have a five-minute break? Because we're going to probably be here, this could easily be another 90 to 120 minutes. Nobody?
No.
Everyone's good?
I would.
Let's just.
Mr. Livinggood, would you like a five-minute break? Otherwise, we'll just go forward.
Or I'm, I'm all ready if you want.
Lou said he wanted a break. It's probably good.
Oh, you do, Lou? Lou, you could use a couple of minutes?
It'd be nice. I mean, I'm.
Lou's off to the Lou.
I think Jimmy needs a break also.
Yeah, yeah, that was a humor break.
Thank you, Mr. Livinggood. So everyone, it's 9:29. Could you? Thank you, Mr. Livinggood. So everyone is 9:29. Could you please be back by 9:34? Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back everyone. See, still waiting for a few. Mr. Livinggood, have you been here since seven o'clock with us?
I have been, yes. In, in the peripherals anyway.
Did you enjoy, have you enjoyed the programming?
Yes.
Have you seen Ted Lasso?
Don't think I have.
Oh, yeah, that, I would recommend that ahead of watching the planning commission, but. Well, it looks like, well, we're still waiting for Commissioner Bartling. Rachel, are you with us? Well, Kate, are you with us? You're with us, aren't you?
I am.
Okay. Um, why don't we, why don't we begin? I don't want to make Mr. Livinggood wait any longer. I appreciate it. Thank you very much, sir. And now please, you know, I think you have, uh, uh, why don't you begin? I, I can't remember how much time you were allotted.
Uh, Kerry, Kerry said 15 minutes, but, um, I, I don't intend to take that full time. Want to be respectful of everybody's time tonight. And I think we've got a, a pretty detailed application. So maybe just a few things. And, and first, um, just wanted to introduce myself. Uh, my name is Joel Livinggood. I'm the general manager at Interlocken. Uh, I've been with the club for about five years. Um, certainly, please, please call me, call me Joel as we, um, go through today's conversation. Um, and I want to first just, uh, thank the commission, um, for your service to Edina. I'm a resident of Edina and certainly appreciate the work that, uh, this group does. And, um, thank you for hearing us, um, tonight. As I mentioned, uh, would like to be brief, thought it might be help, uh, it might help be helpful to share a little bit about Interlocken. Uh, for those of you who don't know, but the, the club was founded, um, its current location in 1909, uh, when a group of, uh, golfers from, uh, Bryn Mawr, uh, were looking for a place to build an 18-hole championship golf course. Um, it's been a, an icon, uh, for, uh, championship golf all across the world since Bobby Jones won the US Open here in, in 1930. And I think become a real, um, jewel of, of Edina. Um, the club encompasses about 170 acres, uh, which includes more than 150 acres of green space. Um, in addition to golf, our members enjoy aquatics, racket sports, fitness, um, winter activities and, and multiple dining options. Uh, the club's membership's about 820 families, um, of which more than 70% reside here in Edina. Uh, and we employ more than 325 people, um, in, in peak season. Um, as Kerry mentioned in his, uh, good report, the improvement plan is really contemplated, um, to address, um, several challenges and, uh, and concerns. Um, number one, insufficient parking. Uh, number two, traffic on Waterman Avenue. Three, employee safety. Uh, four, general security. Uh, and then five, um, some limited golf, golf practice facilities. Um, our application narrative addresses each of these in, in detail, but I want to highlight too, that I think are really the most important, really the core of our ask. Um, and it's first that we need additional parking. Um, the club is consistently short parking spots for members, guests and employees, um, particularly during the summer months. And, and that is the primary timeframe which we'll be using a lot. Um, I expect that it will get little to zero use outside of May through September. Uh, there'll be no need to park, uh, our employees in that, uh, space during that time of the year when it quiets down. Um, there'd be no reason to when it's colder and a further walk. Um, so the pri, the primary purpose is for our employees. It's not for our members. They'll continue to park, um, closer to the, all the amenities and services. Um, and I also think it's important to point out that it's not a debris storage lot, uh, as has maybe been communicated in some, um, commentary. Um, second, um, we really believe it's important to improve safety. Um, the proposed project, project's going to reduce traffic on Waterman Avenue significantly. And one of the questions early on was, um, kind of what type of traffic or what's the reduction in traffic? And we don't track numbers. Um, but what I can tell you in my five years here, complaints about traffic on Waterman Avenue are the number one thing I hear from, uh, residents consistently. Um, and it's a hard challenge to address. It's a public road. It's a public right of way. Uh, it's, it's hard to direct traffic member, employee and guest um, out our main entrance and tell them not to use Waterman, um, when it's there. And so, um, this, with, with the gate that's proposed, there will be, uh, no member or employee traffic in and out of Waterman. So it'll dramatically reduce that traffic. Um, there are some delivery vehicles that have a hard time navigating our main entrance, particularly because of where our loading dock is located. Um, but those trucks are navigating Waterman today. It's been an existing condition, um, uh, for years. There are also maybe times where we have to open it up for certain events or activities. And frankly, we probably look to emergency services to, to guide us there. But Fourth of July at Interlocken is one of our biggest events of the year with, you know, about 1,200 people. And that would be a good example of maybe one time when we'd want to use that road. And frankly, in instances like that, just like the Fourth of July, we work with the police department to help control the traffic, um, in and out. Uh, currently we rent parking spaces from Shepherd of the Hill Church on Blake Road for our employees and caddies. Uh, and we've got real concerns with them crossing Waterman Avenue, particularly, or, uh, excuse me, Blake Road, uh, particularly with cars navigating that, uh, turn not too far away. Um, and so ultimately this is about more parking, uh, and, and safety. Um, we understand there's been a lot of, or there's been several comments from, um, residents, um, opposed to the project. And it's really important to us to be positive contributors to the community. And I, I mean that genuinely. Being good neighbors, super important to us. And I think our approach throughout this process has hopefully demonstrated that. Um, we've been engaged with the planning department and engineering department from early on in our planning process. Um, wanted to ensure the gate, the cul-de-sac, improvements to the roadway, the stormwater management plan all complied with not just their requirements, but their needs. How could we help some, solve some of, um, some of their problems? Or challenges. Um, so the proposed plan includes Interlocken assuming ownership of about 450 feet of Waterman Avenue that the city currently owns. Um, and so, um, conversations with engineering and those, the, the city, um, you know, we would provide easement to the city for utilities, uh, and other necessary access. Uh, and then we'd assume all the maintenance costs associated with that road and, and future repairs. Um, we've also been in communication with nearby residents. Um, you know, the, the club invited 23 residents who own property on Waterman Avenue, uh, the south side of Maloney Avenue and the east side of John's, uh, street to a meeting at the club on April 26th. And so we really took folks that, you know, would have, it would have some view of, um, or, you know, be able to see some type of, uh, some portion of the improvements that, that we were making. Um, we invited them to the club to share more information about the project and listen to their concerns and feedback. Um, and, and frankly, based on that feedback, we made changes to our plan to help address some of those, um, some of those concerns. Um, and I, and I think it's important to note tonight that we'll continue to consider, um, recommendations from, you know, this commission, from, uh, Kerry's team, just like we have, and, and residents to help address their concerns. Um, you know, there's certainly some things that we maybe can't solve for, but if there is a reasonable path to address them that still addresses our needs, um, we are, we, we want to do that. Um, it's, it's important to us. And, you know, I think a lot of the comments, you know, I've had the opportunity to read, I think stretched probably years. Um, and certainly in the five years that I've been here, it's been one of my goals to improve those, um, relationships, improve some of our homes along that street, be more mindful of the tenants that are in there, um, in the properties that we currently rent. And so, um, we do want to address their concerns and do everything we can to mitigate those impacts. And I think, um, we, we've done that in our plans. Um, so I, I'm sure folks will have questions and I'm happy to answer those, but certainly want to thank you again for your service and, and consideration and, and the work that you'd be on, uh, behalf of all of us at Living Edina. So there's nothing, nothing further from me.
Thank you. Thank you. Any commissioners with questions?
Uh, I, I got one.
Hey, Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, I know you mentioned that you took some feedback into consideration and implemented changes to your plan. Uh, could you just give us a couple of examples of those?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, pull up my notes here from the meeting just so I'm, I'm, I'm right on. So, um, change a few things. Um, we added, uh, various native plants, the stormwater filtration basins, that rain garden on the north side. Um, there's a better match than natural landscapes. Um, we added additional tree planting west of the parking lot to vary the aesthetic. So it wasn't just one big green wall. Um, so there's some new, there's some different textures there with the hedge. Um, uh, and then we also revised lighting specifications and controls. So we added additional light poles at lower, um, heights, um, and reduced each pole's lumens. Um, as we shared with residents, we're also open to controlling that scheduling, schedule different. Um, if they'd prefer something, uh, on a motion sensor, so it's completely dark, we're open to that. Uh, if they prefer it be consistently on at a lower level, so it's not coming on and off, we're open to that. Um, and frankly, we're, we're, we're not, we're, we're open having the lot closed, um, when it's not being used. So a vast majority of the year. Um, so just a little bit more context on how it's going to be used. Um, you know, our, um, we're only going to direct our employees to park there who start or end their shifts before dark. So our goal is there's not a lot of cars there, if any, after, uh, after dark. And so particularly in the summertime when it's light till 10:30, you know, the, the traffic in there is going to be pretty minimal, uh, outside those hours. Uh, I certainly don't want to overpromise and underdeliver. There's going to be times when we need that lot, but, um, by and large, we'll, we'll do everything we can to, um, you know, keep it dark and keep the lights down. And that certainly came out of that meeting. It's going to be a primary concern from, from that group.
Guess to follow up on that, what are some of the concerns or considerations you feel like you couldn't meet or weren't necessarily reasonable?
Sure. Um, cutting it in half the size and not tearing down that second house, just the economies of scale. We would still need to rent off property. Um, there's the, the math wouldn't work out for us to think this makes sense. It's a pretty significant investment for us. And so it needs to solve a significant problem. Um, we did explore some permeable surfaces, um, or sorry, permeable surface lot from the environmental perspective. Um, seemed to be a pretty challenging from a cost perspective, once we really understood what that entailed from an engineering perspective. Um, you know, we had some residents come to us and, you know, wanted us to purchase their homes that had views because they weren't aware. And just again, the economics, um, don't, don't work for us. Uh, we couldn't, couldn't do that at scale. So, um, I honestly shy of shrinking the project significantly or buying additional property to screen, you know, we're, we're, we're all ears, but, um, some of those things were just too hard to overcome.
So I'm guessing cost is one of them. One of the, one of the suggestions was doing a, a, a parking ramp or some sort of situation like that. And I'm sure you could speak to that quickly.
Um, yeah, I, I, I don't misquote me, but I think, you know, it's somewhere in three to five times the cost. Um, and, and just wouldn't be feasible for us.
That's just good to hear. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Commissioner Strauss, were you raising your hand? Okay. Sorry, Commissioner Agnew, did you?
Yeah, I have a, a couple of questions. Um, so we did receive some comments about the wildlife that is in the area. Um, can you speak to, uh, the impact on wildlife? I, I know you mentioned, um, some of the stormwater and some of the adjustments that you're making, but can you speak directly to, um, some of the wildlife concerns we can, we received?
Uh, I don't know if I can speak directly to it in that specific area, but I can speak to it certainly broadly across all 170 acres that we have. Um, certainly, uh, important to us. We're always mindful of the environment as we consider, you know, how we maintain the golf course. Uh, we've got a bluebird program that's, um, you know, resulted in hundreds of, of bluebirds in the, in the community. Um, we raise bees on property. Um, we're beginning to, you know, grow some of our own produce and do some other things to, um, you know, we're, to, you know, I guess enhance, um, and, and reduce our impact on the environment. Um, I don't think it'd be fair for me to speak to, you know, the specifics of the wildlife in, in that corridor. But again, there's wildlife all across our property and that's always, um, something that's, that's important to us.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Uh, my next question is, you know, you mentioned the gate and the impact that that will have on, on traffic and on safety. Um, couldn't the gate be installed regardless of the parking lot going up?
Um, it certainly could be a consideration, I guess, from our, our view. You know, we kind of look at, we look at this as, as a package of our employees are parking on, you know, Waterman Avenue, that access on Blake Road is, um, quicker, more convenient. And, um, I guess we look at the site improvements in, in totality. I, I don't think it is something that we would, um, fund and, and improve without the parking lot in full transparency. Uh, we, we view the improvements on that west side as, um, kind of an all encompassing, um, package. And we thought the gate was, um, a positive for, for all parties, both Interlocken as well as the, the neighborhood.
Okay. Um, I think my last question, um, is, you know, we, we talk about the parking lot not being used during, most likely, or lip, to limited, uh, capacity during the, the winter months or the off months, which is obviously, uh, the majority of the year here. Um, which is, is definitely concerning to me to put this type of investment into something that isn't going to be used a majority of the time. Um, so have you given any consideration to what could be done with this lot during those months? That would be of a, um, kind of communal, communal benefit, um, to that community and that general area?
Uh, I guess we haven't, only because the feedback we've gotten from residents is less use would be better. Less noise, less light, less activity. They had concerns, you know, say with that. They said, would you ever put a hockey rink here? We don't want any more hockey rinks. We don't want any more noise or activity. And so I guess we haven't considered that. Um, but the, frankly, the driver of not considering anything over there is we wanted to do everything we could to solve the needs that we have as, uh, you know, a, a, a business with a lot of residents in Edina and, and employees and minimize the impact on, on the neighborhood. And so, uh, I guess we actually, we were looking at it with the opposite lens of saying, how can we solve our challenge with the least amount of impact on the residents? And, and from their perspective, use of that lot really, for anything had impact. So, um, we didn't, but certainly not opposed to having that, um, conversation or if there's something that they saw benefit in, um, hearing about.
Okay. I do not have any more questions at this time, but more might come up.
Sure.
I have a question.
Commissioner Bartling?
Hi, um.
Hi. Had you considered moving the tennis courts to this location and, and it's just expanding the parking as parking?
We, we did. I think the general feedback that we got was the, just the disruption at would probably be greater.
To whom?
Likely to the neighborhood. There's, there's lights on, there's brighter lights on the tennis courts. There's noise associated with pickleball and platform tennis. So there's more, more activity closer to the neighborhood, because we didn't view as being, being helpful.
I would suspect that most of the people though, and, you know, generally would prefer me. If, if this were my home, I'm just saying, I would prefer someone playing tennis and enjoying activities than having smog of cars and noise of cars and starting of cars and theft of cars. And things like that going, you know, the, this, and then a huge asphalt platform, I guess. It's a heat island centrally, right next to their house. But I, I don't know, I think, and it just, it seems to make more sense to just expand your parking. I, I expect it's more expensive for you because you have to move tennis court. But in general, I would see that as a, as a tennis court more of as a buffer, but.
Yeah, I certainly respect the idea from a cost perspective. Yes, it would, would take a project, it would, it would significantly increase our budget. We'd have a building that we'd have to take down in addition to moving the courts. And that, that facility just saw about $800,000 of investment a couple of years ago. And so there's certainly a cost factor as well that would probably make it not feasible.
Seems like you could do the parking along the north side and keep your building there with the, that central piece. But I don't know. That's something I want to know if you thought about.
Yeah, I guess the, the building services tennis, so it's, its primary purpose is for the activities there, so it'd have to be in pretty close adjacency to the courts.
Commissioners? Or any commissioners already asked questions if they have more, and I know. Commissioner Miranda, Commissioner Strauss, I don't know if you've had an opportunity. Commissioner Bennett? Hey, were you gonna?
Yeah, can you hear me? Am I, can you hear me now?
We can hear you, we can hear you pretty well, yeah.
Okay. Hmm, hopefully pretty well works. You mentioned the size. Could you just speak to, I guess?
We lost it. I lost you.
Size of the parking lot. Okay.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, you cut out of me, so I didn't hear the question. I heard, I just heard the word size of parking lot.
Yeah. Can you speak to how you got to the size of the parking lot? And whether that, whether that can be slightly smaller to provide more of a buffer to the north side neighbors?
Yeah, I think we're at approximately 100 stalls. Frankly, we feel like that will certainly help and get us close, but we still, probably will have times where we're challenged for, for parking. And so we certainly look to maximize parking in that space while being mindful of the buffer we're creating with residents. It was certainly a driver of purchasing the two additional buffer properties and keeping those as, as rental homes or as, you know, residential homes. And so we, we did consider scaling back. I think we did scale back 25 stalls early on to create a, a greater buffer on the north side, which were there, where there was some concern. So we feel like we, so we have scaled back from our original plans and, and don't feel like scaling back any further would continue, would make sure the plan makes sense for us.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Anyone else? I have a few questions and maybe other people will also. Mostly, let's see. So some of the public comments that we, we see so far, we're going to have a public hearing next where people can call in. There may be more coming after that. Can you, can you hear me okay?
Again.
Okay. Some of the public comments I noticed, people were concerned about the houses that are going to remain, be remaining standing. What are your plans for those houses? How, how, how will they be used? How will they be kept up?
Absolutely. So the two houses that'll remain, one of them, we currently have some of our full-time staff in. We recently just repainted the house. We've done some work to clean up the yard. We've made some adjustments to our housing agreements and who we put in those houses to ensure that, you know, they're terrific neighbors and respectful of the properties. And so we have made some investment in that home. The home on the north side of the road has been a rental unit. We've rented it to three families over the course of the last few years. Often a home that folks rent when they're renovating their home or just move the area and looking for a place. We purchased the home for $750,000 in 2019, I believe. So it's a very, very nice home, and we intend to continue to use it as a, you know, as a rental property. And have high expectations for those that live in it and, and certainly will maintain it to the highest standards. And that, I, I believe that's improved in recent years and will only continue to. That's important to us.
I want to come back to that in a second, but I, I just, there was one comment, or at least one comment about that at some point in time, this area will be converted to a golf pavilion? Can you comment on that at all?
Yeah, I think broadly I'd comment. I, I read the comments myself and I don't, you know, want to address all the misinformation there, but I can tell you that that's not part of the plan and would not be.
What, what is a golf pavilion? Is that like a, like a, like a Hall of Fame kind of thing?
I, I think what they may be speaking to is some type of facility to hit golf balls outdoors in the winter. There's some other clubs in town. We have, we have five indoor golf simulators on our current property. And, and frankly, the, the setbacks and other things that would be required, even if we wanted to do something like that, do not exist on the west end of that property. It would not be possible to do with our footprint today. And, and frankly, wouldn't make sense for the investment that we're, we're planning to make. So there's not plans to do that.
Like a Braemar Golf Dome or something, that, that kind of thing?
Yeah, I can speculate, but there's the, not consistent with the plan.
Okay. Some of the neighbors raised comments about conduct type things. You touched on it, something for the people in the rental. Is there anything, you know, and I suppose people are more concerned, there's a parking lot there about, you know, what do people do in a parking lot away from the main building? Is there anything you can do to, you know, that's obviously, that's kind of a reputational issue for your club as much as anything, as well as a, as a neighborhood relationship issue? Is there anything you guys have thought about since you got these comments to make, you know, to try to keep that kind of conduct issues?
It's extremely important to me. It's, it's who, who we are and how we are viewed in the community. And frankly, there's few things that are, are less important to me. And so, you know, certainly we've got high standards for our employees. I, I can certainly say in my five years here, if there's ever been something brought to my attention, we address it promptly, immediately, with both members and employees. From the parking lot's perspective, you know, it'll certainly be, again, there's going to be some level of lighting, but it's going to be under surveillance like our other portions of our property are if there were to be an issue. But, you know, I think a lot of those comments, at least from what I know and what's been brought to my attention in five years, have maybe stretched years before that, and, and we're working to improve that and repair that. We've had some terrific team members that have lived on Waterman Avenue in recent years. We've gotten compliments about them. I've had residents ask where they went when they moved out. And, and that's the type of commentary we want, and that's the, certainly what we stress to, to our team. You know, and I, I don't, like I said, I don't think this, you know, this isn't a reason to approve, but I think it's a great example, you know, that, and Kerry can maybe speak to a little bit. But the city did some work on Waterman Avenue a couple of weeks ago, and the road was not really closed off, but it was coned off all the way down the middle of the road. So really no cars could pass and a number of vehicles, some traveling to Interlockin', some not traveling to Interlockin', drove in neighbors' yards and hit irrigation heads and ripped up the yard. And our team was over there on, I gotta, I gotta call it 6:45 on a Saturday morning, and our team was over there early on Monday and repaired the irrigation and resawed it up and down the streets. And we would have done that irregardless of this. Like, it's important to us to be good neighbors. It's important to us to be good contributors to the community. And we expect our staff to model that every day, and we take it extremely seriously if they were to. But there has not been any serious issues in, in my tenure that have been brought to my attention.
Thank you. Thank you for answering that forthrightly. Another concern is that our deliveries, well, are there, are there a lot of deliveries that occur on Waterman and will that change or?
Yeah, so there are some large deliveries that just cannot navigate our main entrance and our loading dock at certain times of the day. Our loading dock is located at the top of the hill. It's, it's hard, maybe if you haven't been to Interlockin'. When you come off Interlockin', Bullheart, you go up a big hill. Our loading dock is right at the top of the hill. You couldn't put a loading dock in a worse place, but they weren't really thinking about that 110 years ago, when, when the clubhouse was built. And so it, it's very convenient for a truck to come down Waterman Avenue, drive up the hill, and then back into the loading dock. It's challenging for them to come in the main entrance, somehow find a way to turn around, get back up and back in. So there's just going to be some situations where we need to use Waterman Avenue for deliveries. For our smaller delivery vehicles, for the typical deliveries, we're certainly going to route them through the main entrance. It's inconvenient for our staff to manage the gate. But I don't want to make the promise that delivery trucks won't be there. But again, that is an existing condition today. I mean, we'll probably have more trucks coming through that way just because it's easier, even the small trucks. So I, I do think there'll be improvement, but it will not be eliminated 100%, and I don't want to be forthright about that.
I, i- is there a plan? People are, neighbors are concerned about trucks idling in front of their houses. Is there a plan to minimize that? And because now without a gate, they can just go through, but now with a gate, they have to sit there and wait for someone to open the gate.
Yeah, our goal is, you know, so the deliveries that do need to access it, I, I hope are twofold. One, it's either they're, they consistently need it, and we can provide them some type of opener access so they can quickly navigate in and out, or an RFID chip or something like that, like you see in other residential communities. If it's a larger delivery that typically doesn't use it, we'd schedule it with one of our team members. They'd meet them down there. They'd let them in. Also, the position of the gate, because of our buffer properties in the parking lot, the truck won't, unless there was a line of trucks, which there, I can't think of a scenario where there ever would be. The idling would, would happen in front of our properties, not in front of any residents' homes. It'd be well within the buffer.
Thanks. And my final question, and maybe others do too, is in our packet, there was a memo dated last Thursday from Luther Overholt, the city forester, regarding the, you know, regarding the landscaping plan. Have you had a chance to look at that and, and think through that, and will that change your plans regarding the landscaping?
No, Kerry and I communicated about that last week and happy to follow all of Luther's recommendations, engage him in the final steps of the plan, and, and plan whatever he recommends would prefer. No issues.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other, that's it for me at this time. Any other commissioners with any further questions? Commissioner Miranda.
Does Interlockin' have a climate action plan?
We do not have a documented climate action plan.
Okay. Do, do you have any kind of solar facilities or anything there?
We do not today.
Okay. Do you, have you thought about having, so the Green Line extension will be coming through not far from there? And I, I'm not suggesting that people with golf clubs are going to walk from the Green Line to there. But in terms of employees, have you thought of having either shuttle to the Green Line or bike parking? So people can take their bike from the, from the Green Line to Interlockin'.
Yeah, we do have bike parking today, and, and some of our employees do, and take the bus in and bike the balance of the way. The biggest challenge for us is obviously we still have, you know, some employees that, that come in in the wintertime. And not all of our employees are, you know, in close proximity to some of this public transit, but certainly something we, we could explore.
Okay. Do you have any incentives for employees to take transit?
We do not.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else at this time? Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Livinggood. This is a public hearing. And so I, I think if anyone who's calling would like to call in and give feedback or testimony on this matter, I can give you the information to do so at this time. If you'd like to call, call 1-800-374-0221. Enter conference ID 8289182, and press star one to be connected to the meeting. You'll have to give your name, address, and phone number, and you'll have up to three minutes. And we, we ask that you not duplicate, if possible, comments other people have made. So with that, we do like, I'll turn over, I'll ask our communications team. Dan, do we have any callers?
We do have several callers tonight, and we do already have two in queue to speak. So if the operator can please unmute the line of Mr. Robert Frimmerman. And Mr. Frimmerman, I hope I'm not that correctly, please state your name and your address for the record before you speak.
Sure thing. Can you hear me?
Welcome, welcome. Thank you. Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. And great job, Frimmerman. You pronounced it perfectly well. So this is Robert Frimmerman. I live at 6229 Maloney Avenue. My family and I purchased our home just this last December and moved to Dyna. We have loved immersing ourselves into you guys' city, between the parks and the trails, and my daughters in lacrosse and soccer, and I coached soccer. And we, we have just loved what this city has afforded our city and, and jumped in headfirst and have loved it. I would say, we purchased our home, I'll give you the background of who we are. So, so I, I am in Housing Policy and Regulatory Affairs, and my wife is in the attorney. We are the stereotypical dorks that love comprehensive plans. We look at them to make informed decisions. We looked at them before we bought our house, for one of many reasons. One, there was an open lot, and I know by fact of what I do, what open vacant lot does, it has impacts to the neighborhood that concerned us. We made informed decisions based upon what that comprehensive plan told us and what the different categorizations are one and the colors and all that stuff is. So I wanted to kind of put that out there, that we, we hope to rely upon that in the future as well. Putting a parking lot interior to a neighborhood is, is just wrong and sets a very dangerous precedent. The application states it's for seasonal use and there are some safety concerns. So I want to talk about those. But first of all, I want to thank you here. We've had the privilege of kind of going back through past meetings and learning about all you've done. And I want to thank you for approving the resurfacing of Shepherd of the Hill. That subject that's going through in phasing, that's the area that, that the applicant is using for extra parking. It's very helpful to have that kind of built up, fix some directional issues. And we love that parking lot because it's on Blake. It's open. Everyone can see it. Everyone can see what's going on there. So I want to thank you for that. I also want to thank you for the improvements to Blake Road. Having the sidewalks and the trails coming in short order will help address many of our same concerns the applicant has about crossing Blake, because we cross that every day to connect to all the parks and the roads and everything else. We would ask the applicant to look for more creative ways to ferry their people by using the existing seasonal lot we already have that you've approved to, you've approved to improve, approved to improve, and find a way to get their people back and forth. That way we can get use of an open lot that's already approved and it's only seasonal. Parking lots are unsafe. They, they just are. And as the applicant admits, there's, there's an incident and crime issue. In order for this parking lot to be safe, it has, it's wrong for a neighborhood. You've got to have high security fences. You've got to have 24-hour lights. You've got to have surveillance. You've got to have people there. You can't tuck it behind a building and put up six-foot-tall trees. We can't see it, and they can't see it either. Parking lots need to be in the open. We can monitor. So I would ask you guys to deny this. We think it does contradict with the comprehensive plan on many different levels. Thank you very much again for the time and, and participating in the process.
Thank you. Dan, do we have a second caller?
Yes, our next caller is Frank Thomas. So if the operator can please unmute the line of Frank Thomas. And again, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Thomas.
Hello?
Mr. Thomas, can you hear us?
No, I can't. Just a minute. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello?
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 Hello, you're on.
Okay. Can, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I have a first question. Where do the code of ordinances fit in with the comprehensive plan? Article one, section 36-1, where the philosophy is stated, and then 36-2, you have objectives. Maintain, protect, and enhance single-family detached dwelling neighborhoods as the dominant land use. Section, number three, control the use, development, and expansion of certain non-residential uses in the single-dwelling family district in order to reduce or eliminate undesirable impacts of such non-resident users. Section five, provide an enjoyable living environment by preserving existing topography, vegetation, streams, water bodies, and other natural land and water. vegetation, streams, water bodies and other natural land and water forms. Number nine, establish requirements for parking and loading to minimize impacts on public streets and surrounding properties. That's the first question I have. The second thing I'd like to state is Interlocken has had a parking problem since the late eighties. They have chosen not to put it in their long-term parking plan. They have reduced the spaces. They have less spaces today. A perfect example is they just redid their main parking lot and they reduced the parking spaces from 210 to 270. They also applied for a conditional use permit for their maintenance building for 24,000 square foot. And they had other land. They tried to locate it north of where it is. The neighbors got them to stop. It actually was the console. So anyway, they moved it farther south and instead of building in some parking, they built more practice area. So that's a problem. The other thing, there used to be a gate on Waterman and they took it out. It was, and they promised 20 years ago that they would not have any delivery trucks come down Waterman Avenue. And yet that didn't hold very long until they moved their loading dock up front. And they did ask the members not to drive down the street as much. That didn't last, but the gate was open. It used to be closed at night and it used to be closed during the winter. So um, and the question I would ask anybody is how would they like this 105, 35,000 square foot asphalt 80 feet from their property line? I don't think any member, anybody on the planning commission or the council would want this in their backyard. They have plenty of other places they could have put it. They choose not to. They have created the problem and what they're planning to do will harm the neighborhood. They can look, they're creative. They've got 170 acres. There's three or four places they could put some parking. It wouldn't be 35,000 square. Okay, that's, I'd like to hear the answers to that.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. We were, we're collecting comments and then we'll respond at the end of public testimony. We'll go through them. Thank you. Uh, Dan, do we have any other callers?
Uh, our next caller in the queue is Eric Ryan. So if the operator can please unmute the line of Eric Ryan and please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Eric Ryan. I'm at 513 John Street. Uh, I'm here to ask you to reject the conditional use permit and variance to allow Interlocken to construct a parking lot on two existing residential home properties. I believe the most important part of your job is to make determinations on behalf of the public and more specifically residents of Edina. You have heard from many other members of the community on why this is not safe or desirable specific neighborhood, so I will not repeat those items. I'm here to talk about intent and precedence of approval of conditional use permits and variances for this use. Intent, I believe when exceptions in residential R1 zoning were made that include a conditional use for golf courses in Edina, it was meant for existing golf course facilities. These conditional use exceptions in section 36 dash 434 were made in 1970 and then edited in 1992. Those dates are decades and decades after the three golf courses, Interlocken, Edina Country Club and Braemar were developed. Thus, it is fair to interpret that the purpose of these conditional uses were to help the city and existing facilities from administrating rezoning hundreds of acres. This makes complete sense for when current zoning was adopted in 1970 and 1992. Using this exception to destroy existing homes and properties does not. The second item I would like to speak on is precedence. As members of the planning commission, every month you sit here and do the difficult job of not only considering specific applications, but also must consider the precedence of future applications. With that in mind, I cannot imagine the slippery slope if the commission approves this application. For this application, I would think you would not just consider the Interlocken property and future preference you would give them, precedence you would give them, but further consider all three of the golf courses in the city of Edina. If you approve this conditional use permit for a parking lot on an existing in-use residential property that Interlocken bought, you are not only citing the precedence that the city of Edina is fine with parking lot over res- existing residential homes that have and will grow generations of Edina families, but when golf courses have little, a little traffic congestion, they can flash their wallet instead of finding a place to fulfill parking on the roughly 170 acres of property the course has. Let me repeat that more succinctly. If this is approved by the planning commission, you are telling myself and the city of Edina residents, you are fine with golf courses turning existing residential properties into pavement rather than solve the solution on the 170 acres of existing land. If welfare and protecting for single-family neighborhoods within the city of Edina is not within your powers, I believe the comprehensive plan needs to be amended to include that. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Dan, do we have other people wishing to give testimony?
We, we do have several callers still on the line. We don't have anyone in queue right now. So um, I would advise maybe we wait 30 seconds or so. Um, okay, that worked. We do have one additional caller. Uh, Deborah Frimmerman is uh, is in the queue. So if the operator can please unmute Deborah Frimmerman's line.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Deborah Frimmerman. I live at 6229 Maloney Avenue. My family recently moved to Edina. We purchased our home six months ago. Prior to making that purchase decision, we reviewed the city's comprehensive plan. As my husband mentioned earlier, he works in housing policy and I'm an attorney. And we are the kind of people that review comprehensive plans. We relied on it when making our home buying decision. One of the things we looked at is the future land use map, which is figure 3.12 on page 3 dash 26 of the comprehensive plan. We looked at what the area right behind us, which is the parking lot site, was guided to and it is guided yellow. Yellow being low-density, single-family homes. The golf course and all of its facilities are designated blue or purple for a large semi-public institution. The comp plan guides these spaces for different future uses. The sixth element to grant a conditional use permit requires a project to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, which this project is not. The planning staff conflates the zoning ordinance with the comprehensive plan. If the city of Edina had wanted to include this area as part of the golf course, they certainly could have done so. It appears from the comments on Better Together that the country club has had this plan in the works long before we were ever thinking of buying this home and long before the current comprehensive plan was adopted. The prior general manager was working on it with the city. And if that is the case, the city knew about it, the city could have guided the use and made the area blue, but the city did not do that. But my biggest concern is safety. I have a six-year-old. We moved to this neighborhood because it's a neighborhood. We want our daughter to be able to play in the backyard with her friends. And right now it is an idyllic neighborhood where the properties back up to each other where the kids play. If this project moves forward, we would have over 100 parking spots in our backyard. The third element to grant a CUP must mean something. So there must be a situation where a project is not approved because it is contrary to the public health, safety and welfare. When you think about all the crime that occurs in parking lots, particularly parking lots that are interior to a neighborhood and secluded without the eyes of the public from the road, from people passing by, is incredibly unsafe. Statistically, this is ki- this kind of parking, this secluded parking lot is where crime occurs and it is wrong for our neighborhood. For all of these reasons raised tonight by the neighborhood, I ask you, I beg you, please deny this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frimmerman. Uh, Dan, do we have a, another caller?
We do. At this moment, we have two in the queue. Our next caller is Christine Highland Lamson. If uh, the operator can please unmute the line and uh, Ms. Lamson, please state your name and address.
Uh, my name is Christine Highland Lamson and I live on John Street, directly impacted by the parking lot. Can you hear me?
Welcome. Welcome.
Can you hear me okay? I should just say what I feel?
Yes, I can hear you very well.
Okay. My property backs up to the proposed parking lot directly. I've lived here for three years. We bought here because of the beautiful natural like park setting, which you is so rare to find in the city. Interlocken Country Club's need for additional parking lot for supposed safety reasons for their employees and sometimes members takes away my personal safety as well as my neighbor's safety. Placing a non-permeable raised, and I don't think it's been mentioned tonight, it will be a raised proposed parking lot in the middle of our neighborhood is not a good idea. Destroying irreplaceable natural green spaces of an affordable housing neighborhood, harming the wildlife which was mentioned earlier, changing the safe natural ecosystems does not make any sense. The ICC proposed parking lot is an isolated location, location which will draw in opportunities for crime and insecurity that ICC thinks will be fixed to satisfy the concerns with obtrusive lighting, some sort of fencing that will create an unsettling blight on our natural vista of our neighborhood. Cutting legacy trees down and replacing them with six feet, six-foot-tall trees. There's already a natural border of trees that are 50 feet high that they're gonna take down. And they will not, the new trees will not be that size for 100 years. Noise and environmental pollution. Um, there has to be other options to create safer parking lots for your employees and in quotation marks, overflow occasional parking for special events on your entire 170 acres of land that would maintain the character of what you say that you would like to keep of our neighborhood. Why are you potentially approving this parking lot when the neighborhood's residents are against it? Who does this benefit? A green space is irreplaceable. Once it's gone, it's gone. Why would Edina approve another parking lot which would create safety concerns for me and for everyone? Placing a parking structure of any description inside an existing neighborhood is a recipe for disaster. Would any of you want this in your backyard? This is not in the character of the neighborhood. One more question I'd like to ask. Would the residents who call Waterman Avenue home, if they agree with this proposal? If they think there would be less delivery traffic like the ICC studies claim? How many delivery trucks? I can hear them from my house. It's a constant flow every day. And I want to um, address the statement, what are the special events that the gates would be open to? And the parking lot may be open to and not just for employees. You're at three minutes? Okay. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Dan, do we have another, uh, uh, next caller?
Our next caller is David Brockway. If the operator can please unmute the line of David Brockway and please state your name and full address.
Uh, Brockway, did I hear that correctly?
Uh, Brockway, yep. David Brockway.
With a B or not a B?
Thank you. A B as in boys.
Okay. Wel- welcome, Mr. Brockway.
Yeah. Um, so people have certainly uh, hit most of the highlights of the people who were opposed to this. And, and I guess the, uh, in terms of um, public welfare, if that, if that counts for the neighborhood, uh, I'll go along certainly with lights interfering with sleep, um, aesthetics, green space, increased noise, all things that reduce quality of life and even health. I think the, the main point I have to get across is that this parking lot doesn't seem necessary. Interlocken membership has had a waiting list for a long time. Uh, there seems to be uh, only a few cars parked at the church parking lot. Uh, it just seems like 100-space parking lot uh, isn't necessary. Um, certainly the green space uh, uh, being destroyed for another parking lot and the environmental aspect of that and climate change issues, that type of thing. It just doesn't seem like this is a time to um, uh, to offer a conditional use permit. So I would ask the uh, commission to, to deny that. And uh, that's what I, uh, that's what I have.
Ask if your wife can do it.
Cue.
Uh, my wife also, uh, sorry, go ahead.
Hello?
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 Ms. Brockway?
Hello? Yeah. Am I up?
Yes. Well, you, you can finish the, yeah.
Okay. So, okay. So my, my point is that parking lots are ugly. I don't think anyone can deny that. But they're necessary if they enhance the welfare of the general population. That's not the case here. This parking lot is only.
Hello?
Hello? Mr. Chair, this is Dan Reesig. I do, I do think we lost uh, Mrs. Brockway via that phone call. However, she is in the queue. Um, I don't know if it's on a different line, but if, if she does wish to speak, she can um, if the operator can please unmute her line and then she can go ahead and give testimony as well.
Perfect.
I'm very confused. Can you unmute me?
You are, you are live. You are live. So we'll, we'll, please, please share your thoughts.
So, okay. Okay. So this is seasonal and infrequent use. A benefit for their members and added value for a private club at our expense at the decrease in value of our homes and our experience in this neighborhood. The proposed, proposed lot will benefit its members for maybe a few hours a week when they play golf or use the tennis courts. We live, live here 24/7. This neighborhood is built around backyards. In fact, we bought our home here for one major reason because all of the long, deep backyards folded one into another to give the impression of a park, a beautiful little green space in the middle of a city. Our neighbors all live in their backyards. We are totally invested in this green space and ICC wants to bulldoze it. Why? For an unnecessary parking lot and it is unnecessary. It has an arrangement with Shepherds of the Hill. I think it's been for about 10 years where they rent space about half a block from the proposed site. My husband and I walk our geriatric dogs across Blake every day. And by the way, our spaniel is 16 years old and we are not sprinting. We've never had a close call. In fact, I looked at the police reports and couldn't find a single pedestrian accident reported crossing Blake Street at that locale. And Shepherds of the Hill's overflow parking lot is never filled. It's never half-filled. It's rarely a quarter-filled. Most of the time, there's only 10 or 15 cars there. It's nowhere near the 125 that ICC is asking for. They already have an established relationship. Even better, Edina has recently approved the CUP for the church to overhaul their parking lot. I assume with better lighting, surveillance, monitors, all the things necessary to make a parking lot safe. All the things which ICC's parking lot will categorically be unable to assure this neighborhood. ICC by their own count has over 39 or has 39 parking lot break-ins and that's under their very nose of their, their main building. Our neighborhood has had one, one, and it involved a relative of the person reporting the incident. They launched, the lot they want to make is completely hidden behind tennis courts and hedges. There will be no human eyes on it, but you can bet there'll be crime. And the only way to provide my neighborhood protection against that is to put up lights and modern monitors and surveillance. We don't want to be surveilled in our backyards. We do not want car headlights sweeping the interiors of our homes. We do not want floodlights just surveying the night sky. We do not want honking horns. We do not want strangers standing there whenever they choose within stone's distance of our backyards. I did a search on Google Maps of all the golf courses in Minneapolis and the western suburbs and none of them, not one, inserted a parking lot right into the bar, backyards of their neighbors, which is what this will be. Okay, thank you. It's unprecedented. Don't do it.
Thank you for the call. Uh, Dan, do we have other callers?
We do not have any in queue right now. If you want to wait about 30 seconds or so just to make sure the delay catches up. In case anyone is interested, I can uh, let you know when that time is reached. Okay, we do have one additional caller. Uh, Jeffrey Coleman is on the line. So if the operator can please unmute the line of Jeffrey Coleman. Jeffrey Coleman is on the line, so if the operator can please unmute the line of Jeffrey Coleman.
Thank you, can you hear me?
It's Mr. Coleman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, thank you. Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you very much. My name is Jeff Coleman. I live at 6313 Waterman, which is directly adjacent to the golf course property, directly adjacent to the cul-de-sac and the gate. But I want to address the parking lot. By way of background, I'm a licensed engineer in Minnesota who practice structural engineering. I'm also an attorney who practices construction law and I'm the immediate past president of the American Concrete Institute. What hasn't been addressed here, we've heard many comments about additional parking available on 170 acres. But what hasn't been addressed is that Interlochen can easily address this problem by constructing a one-level precast parking deck, no more than 12 to 15 feet high, that would double their parking on the existing parking footprint and that would not impose any additional parking in the neighborhood. I know this is not a variance request, but this is not consistent with our neighborhood. We're a neighborhood of houses, not parking lots. And it's not needed because there are other options available to address the parking considerations. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for calling. Dan, do we have anyone else?
We do not have anyone in the queue, so if we want to reset that 30-second clock or so just to give a chance for anyone to catch up, I'll let you know when we hit 10:32. We do not have any additional callers in the queue, Mr. Chair.
Well, thank you, thank you, Dan. But just, we may be moving to more in-person or next, I don't know if it's more hybrid, but I just want to say right now, I mean, as we're hitting kind of this milestone, this is our last public call-in. You've done a great job of handling this Zoom situation. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I'll bring in the planning commission and does anyone wish to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, if I can interrupt, we did get one additional call before we close the public hearing. Ayana Coleman is on the line. If the operator can please unmute the line of Ayana Coleman.
Ms. Coleman?
Hello? Hi. Hello there.
Hello, welcome to the planning commission.
Hi, I'm going to be really brief. I do live on Waterman Avenue and to respond to the caller previously asking about the traffic, the delivery traffic is constant and sometimes is very dangerous. And it starts at about 5:45 in the morning and it's continuous throughout the day. As far as activities that are semi-monitored during the year, we have consistent golf tournaments, tennis and pickleball tournaments, weddings, swimming competitions that typically aren't monitored as far as traffic control. So I hope that answers some questions. And, you know, I completely hope that there is a gate and I hope there is monitoring, but there is some serious questions involved and I think there needs to be more discussion involved. So thank you for your time. Bye-bye.
Thank you. All right, Dan, do we have any other callers?
There are no additional callers, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. What I said still holds. You've done a great job in handling the call-in. Usually when we're in person, people just walk right up to the lectern and so, and the microphone. So, you know, this is a little, much more, you know, many more steps and logistics. Thank you. Would the planning commission like to close the public hearing then? Should we wait a few seconds or?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Okay. Well, I didn't realize that was off. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote, please?
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Bertling?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Stroh?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Karen Nemrov?
Aye, thank you. So I have some notes I made from the callers, maybe other people do also. Would anyone, I'll offer anyone else if you want to follow up. Otherwise, I can go through mine and then you can follow me if anyone wants. Okay, a few for Planner Teague to start with. One, we received a comment about the intent of the statute at the time it was drafted to, you know, to kind of like grandfather existing uses, but not to approve or allow for, you know, expanded uses or new uses of golf courses. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, being, I was not around at that time. I'm not sure the detail of those ordinances other than, you know, we're going by what the existing codes say today. And it says anytime you're expanding parking within a conditionally permitted use, you need another conditional use. So it seems the intent, if that was put in the code at that time, the intent was these are allowed uses, but the city does have some control. You need that conditional use permit and they need to hold public hearings and follow those conditional use permit criteria.
Okay, thank you. There was a comment that made reference to chapter three of the comprehensive plan on page 3-26, figure 3.12. Have you had a chance to look at that?
Well, the general question was where do the code of ordinances fit into the comprehensive plan? And the comprehensive
That was a different one, but you can answer that one. You can answer that one. That was a different question, but okay.
Yep, I have not looked up that specific citation. But in generally, the comprehensive plan informs the zoning ordinance. So there may be recommendations within the comprehensive plan to put into ordinance form. And so we are, you know, we're reviewing this based on the existing codes.
Okay, maybe we'll come back to that. Could you, could you just pull up the comprehensive plan? Why don't you take a moment and
Yeah, what was that citation?
It's in chapter three, it's page 3, it's 20, it's page 26 of chapter three. And there's a graphic, figure 312.
It may take me a minute, so you can continue with your, with your discussion and I'll come back.
I had one more question for you. Do you want me to ask that or you want me to wait?
Sure, you can go ahead and ask. I'll pull up the comp plan as we talk.
Okay, there was a comment about this being out of character. I think it acknowledged that this isn't a variant. The commenter acknowledged it wasn't a variance. Is character, is it consistent with the character of the neighborhood? Is that an issue for CUPs?
Character of the neighborhood is not listed as those conditions, but I believe it would tie into that does not have an undue adverse impact on the public health, safety and welfare. So it could generally fit into that category.
Okay. Thanks for that answer. So why don't we just wait for you? While Carrie's looking that up, I think that right now concludes my questions. Does anyone else have any follow-up questions coming from the public hearing?
Yes, this is just like a very, very like specific question. But I think one of the callers referenced a reduction that was done with the existing parking lot from, and I might have gotten the numbers wrong, but I think that the numbers were from 210 spaces within that parking lot down to 170. And so my question is for the applicant, if that is true, if the parking lot was changed to have 40 fewer parking spaces.
That is not true. The parking lot, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. I'm certainly happy to revert after pulling an old plan, but we did make some improvements to the parking lot. But as I recalled the discussion from three years ago when we did that, our goal was to get very close to the same number of stalls that we had. We shrunk the size of the stalls in order to do that while creating some walkways because we had safety concerns within our own property. His numbers were 210 and 170 and that is not correct.
Okay, thank you.
Planner Teague, have you had a chance to look at the comp plan? No?
I did and I see that figure, it's the same map that I included in my presentation and acknowledged that the golf course itself has that semi-public designation. And the single-family homes that they've purchased do have that low-density residential designation. So there are differing designations. That said, within the R1 zoning district, which all of these properties are located, these uses are allowed. So it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, whether it's guided semi-public-public. As I mentioned, some of our golf courses, like Braemar, has a parks designation to it. But those again are all uses that are allowed under the current zoning of R1.
So let me ask it a different way. If we were to do this map on page 3.26 today, excuse me, would a small portion of the yellow now be blue? You know, if we did post this plan?
We could do that, certainly.
Well, I mean, another way to ask it is, is some of the areas that are yellow on that map, are they going to be basically blue?
Yeah, it's essentially those five properties that I had highlighted earlier. Three on the north side of Waterman and I believe it was two on the south side.
So would we, so when people say it doesn't meet the comprehensive plan, they're saying it doesn't meet this chart on, is, so I guess the question is, does it matter if it doesn't meet, does it matter if it doesn't meet the chart? Or would we need to do a comprehensive plan to change this chart?
I don't believe, yeah, I don't believe we need to because the uses are allowed in an R1 zoning district, which the properties are currently zoned and so is the golf course.
Okay, thanks, thanks. Anyone else? I'm starting to run out of battery on my computer. Anyone else? Well, I think we closed the public hearing and so now it's opportunity for the planning commission if they have any further questions or comments or motions on this matter. Commissioner Agnew?
I feel like we're all just kind of waiting for someone to speak first, so I will. You know, I'd really like to see, I think, more creative approaches to meeting the transportation needs of employees. I think Commissioner Miranda offered some great suggestions and I'll also call attention to the fact that you indicate that this lot would be used quite infrequently in the winter. For a majority of the use would be during the summer. And yet you stated that bikes weren't a feasible transportation option because employees wouldn't be able to ride those in the winter. So it seems like that's something that's really at odds. And I would really like this area to come up with, I don't know, maybe it's potentially adding in a shuttle for safety or some other creative approaches. I think maybe one really positive thing that could come from this is adding in this gate because it does sound like there are some concerns from the community with traffic already. And so I am concerned with putting in a parking, parking area that would potentially impact that as well. So I like the idea of adding the gate, but I don't think that I can support adding parking at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Agnew. Anyone else have any further comments or questions? Commissioner Miranda?
Thank you, Commissioner Agnew, for stating a lot of things that I was going to state and commenting on my previous comments. The, so I am thinking of voting against this because based on the, you know, how it meshes with the comprehensive plan. And I haven't had the time to go and identify specific sentences or paragraphs from the comprehensive plan, but I'm looking at the end of chapter three where it talks about goals and especially the last three goals. And, you know, it talks about create-maintain housing options, support enhanced commercial mixed-use areas that serve the neighborhood, city and larger region, and ensure public realm design respects community character, support commercial mixed-use development, creates high-quality experiences from pedestrian cyclists, transit users and motorists. And, you know, kind of everything about this doesn't do any of those goals. And so as Commissioner Agnew pointed out, I was going to mention this, you know, if it's not used in the winter or it's freely used in the winter, you know, you're paving this area for, you know, a very small use. And, you know, when we look at, I mean, we've discussed parking regulations within the city and that's something we're going to work on. And we look at areas like 44th and France where, you know, we're pushing for shared parking. We don't want to have single-use parking, right? And here we have something built in right down the block where they're currently leasing space. And for the limited use that this thing seems to require, it just seems like that goes against kind of everything the city is doing in terms of sustainability and climate change. So, and then, you know, in terms of the city has goals of affordable housing and while this isn't really an affordable housing neighborhood, we're still tearing down houses to put up a parking lot. And, you know, that seems to go against everything the city's been doing for the past 10 years. So I just think that this isn't really, for me, this isn't really doing anything that suggests the city should give in anything for this. Thank you.
Commissioner Miranda? Other commissioners? Would you like to make a motion?
I'll say one thing and I'm going to say this expecting that this is probably incorrect. I'm going to, but it's probably incorrect, which is that I think if it is approved, it seems to me that amending the comp plan would be the appropriate thing. I'm concerned about approving something that's different than a graphic that's in our comprehensive plan. I am actually also, you know, I'm just generally concerned about doing something different than what was stated in our comprehensive plan, particularly in a residential area because as part of doing the comprehensive plan, we made a lot of representations that change was going to be limited to certain districts and development was going to occur at certain districts and this district wasn't one of them. And I know, I know it's a conforming use under the plan, but I feel like having been involved with that comprehensive plan, I guess I would, I would feel better if that were amended, that chart were amended, if this were approved. That's, and I say that with the humility of knowing that Carrie probably knows more and is much about what's required for comprehensive plan and is much more likely to be technically correct than I am. So I'll admit to my weaknesses and, but still share my thoughts on that one. Any motions? Approve something, deny?
I'll make a motion if I'll make a motion um if if comments are done. Um so I move to deny this request. Um based on the effect on public health, safety, and welfare. Um I believe it would have an impact on that.
Thank you. Was there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, um any, so I'm going to ask that, I just mentioned comprehensive plan. Is there is there something about the comprehensive plan, or you just wanna? Stay with what you just stated, which is fine, totally fine.
No, I'm just not that good at crafting my motions. I think, yes, that's a, that's a fair point, um that we should also make a reference to. Um your specific note about the comprehensive plan. As well as Commissioner Miranda's.
Can I volunteer to amend it then, that it doesn't follow the goals of the comprehensive plan?
Thank you.
Commissioner Agnew has worded, but y- yes.
Yes.
And Commissioner Miranda, you seconded it, so I assume you're okay with that. Planner Teague, are those sufficient findings of facts?
Uh, those are your findings, so. Um, I think they're. Yeah, I I couldn't think of anything. Um, well, I was kind of jotting down some notes. Whether they apply, I'm not sure. You know, it's covered in the comprehensive plan and the 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 conditional use permit criteria, so. Um those are the two, two big items items, so I would, I would write this as the findings. Um that it doesn't meet the conditional use permit based on the health, safety, and welfare, you know, that specific language. That the project is not consistent with the comprehensive plan land use goals to protect single-family homes. And the current comp plan designation for the residential lots is low-density residential. Which is not consistent with the rest of the golf course.
Commissioner Agnew, is that, that worked for you, or?
I want, can we add in the additional components from the uh comprehensive plan that Commissioner Miranda referenced as well?
Yeah, that was the second part of what I said, the the land use goals that are at the end. I I didn't say at the end of the chapter, but it's the. It is the six goals at the end of that chapter.
Okay, just making sure we are incorporating all of those. So yes, I am, I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
Commissioner Miranda, you good too, or?
Yep, yep.
Any further discussion by the commission?
Yeah, I guess I just have a comment. Um. I think this one's obviously tough. There's a lot going both ways. I'm kind of in the boat of. I I find it hard to justify this doesn't achieve. Um, the requirements for the conditional use permit, but I do see the sides of it not jiving with the comprehensive plan specifically with. You know, single, single-family home property being basically transformed into. Parking lot or, you know, supporting that, so. Um, while I'm torn and I'm leaning to not support, it wouldn't be for any of the conditional use permit. I guess, conditions it would be for the comprehensive plan, so. I just wanted to say, throw that out there. I think talking about the safety, health, and welfare, I think. What's proposed is going to, you know, minus the potential for stuff happening in a parking lot. I mean, this is going to mitigate traffic issues and enhance the safety, as far as I can tell. Compared to the current state, so I have a hard time agreeing with that. It's just something up for discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Any other commissioners with any further comments or thoughts? Guess that's a redundancy, but.
I I would like to kind of respond to Commissioner Bennett's remarks. Um I think when I'm considering safety and the impact, um you know, I I think that your point of. Of thinking about how this improves safety and and safety in the neighborhoods. Um, I think that the gated part of this might be a component. That provides some of that safety, um but then I think that having the parking lot introduces some some risks. Of safety as well from the other side. Um and so I think that some of the the safety concerns that are alleviated by this plan. Could still be alleviated um with other aspects of the plan that do not include the parking lot. Um and so I think that by bundling those together, I do see your point of of it getting. Um, complicated.
Yeah, certainly. Yeah, and I think, I think where I'm coming from too is if there is a justifiable, you know, purpose, which. It seems they've demonstrated for a hundred parking spots. Concentrating that parking on their property instead of elsewhere is inherently safer to, you know, the neighbors versus having those cars. Um and that traffic going to and fro elsewhere, so like, that's just where I'm at with that, but I see your point too. Um. Yeah, it's it, I think regardless if the gate is installed, that helps both situations. Like whether this is approved or not, that should probably happen.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just further comment on Commissioner Bennett's uh comments. Um, when I'm thinking of adverse impact on public health, safety, and welfare, I'm thinking about. Climate change and greenhouse, greenhouse, uh greenhouse gases. Um, you know, more cars on Blake Road, which is a bike path through the city. Um, you know, just encouraging more car infrastructure and and less non-car infrastructure.
Thank you all. Any, anything further or or other? I'll call, I'll call for a vote. So, Ms. Olson, if you could do a roll vote, uh this, what an I is to deny. The CUP for the conditions stated by Commissioner Agnew, you know, and and Planner Teague stated them. A nay would be to not, would be to not deny it. Um and if you do vote nay, then we would go down perhaps other paths. It'd be another, there could be either another. Motion for denial with other reasons. There could also be a motion for approval with reasons or for something, so. Um, everyone good?
Okay, I just, on that, I'm gonna, one quick thing, uh on on that sta- stating that motion, are they able to? Come back with a better, a a plan that uh is more appropriate to what we're stating?
Well.
And being more creative with how they're developing their comprehensive plan and thinking about parking in a different way, or. Developing a better system.
So, but see, Kerry, I'm at turn already. I don't really know what, if there is a denial on a CUP. What the applicant's next opportu- options are, o- other than going to the city council, of course.
Yeah, yep, yep. This is, yeah, recommendation for the city council. Um, I believe with the conditional use permit. I I'll have to check the code and see if there's that one-year waiting provision for a conditional use permit. I will look that up.
Can I ask you a question about that? Is a CUP only needed because it's converting these other lots? If they did it all on their existing property, would a CUP be needed?
It would for the the parking lot.
Okay.
Anytime you're expanding parking, requires conditional use permit.
Okay. Um. So. Mr. Livinggood, could you come on for just a moment, please?
Go ahead.
So, uh you know, I I I I I'm I'm sure you've been following what we've been discussing, but I just wanna just restate it and ask you. Um, so we're now about to take a vote on denial. You have a couple of options, and I I can't lay them out perfectly for you because I don't know everything. So one is, we can vote, and if if we, if if, you know, if majority of votes. Vote to deny, you would then have the option of appealing to the city council who could approve or disapprove. Uh approve or deny, or, you know, and if they deny, there may be. We couldn't, we couldn't verify, so I apologize, a waiting period before you could come before to before us the new CUP. So that's one path. You have another path that you could choose, which is to pull your application for now and come up with something different. And hope for, you know, hope that that would get approved, and I I can't really give you any prognostication.
Yeah, we we would appeal to the council, so I'm comfortable with a vote. Um, is there any opportunity to comment on any of the comments that were made? I mean, there's some things that shit that were shared that I think, uh I guess, like to make a couple of comments on if I could. If not, I certainly understand.
Okay, so are you okay with our going ahead and taking the vote now then?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for the discussion. So with that, any other questions with the commission? Any other commissioners, any comments? Okay, Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote? And again, an I is to deny the CUP. A nay is to not deny the CUP.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Burtling?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Nay.
Commissioner Bennett?
Nay.
Chair Namarov?
I I I'm I'm really torn. I apologize. I know you guys don't expect me to ever be caught without being able to say something. Um, I'm gonna vote nay. Um. Probably for the reasons that Commissioner Bennett stated. So that puts us in a quandary. I mean, we can do another motion. We have six members here tonight, six commissioners. Planner Teague, can you advise us on the next step?
Yeah, so that vote was three-three. Is my math right on that? Um I'm not sure how you would change it, but we have sent recommendations to the city council on a split vote like this. In the past, um, not ideal, but unless there's another motion that you wanna. Try to make an approval motion, I I'm not sure. I guess that would be up for discussion. Otherwise, we would just, we would move forward with the three-to-three vote.
I I I think there are two other possible motions, and one would be a denial based on not meeting the comprehensive plan. A second would be an approval, uh or three possible motions. One would be denial, I'm just thinking aloud, there could be a myriad more. One would be denial for not meeting the comprehensive plan. Second would be an approval subject to an amendment to the comprehensive plan. And third would be an approval with no amendment to the comprehensive plan. I think those are the three options. Maybe there are more. Those are three, excuse me, let me rephrase that. Those are not the three options. Those are the three that come to my brain. Um. Any, anyone else have any further thoughts, or? Otherwise, I guess the fourth option is to just say that we took a motion to deny and it was tied. And say that to council, I don't care. Could we do that? That, or?
We could go forward with the three-to-three vote. But it looks like Attorney Kendall is is gonna chime in.
Well, I I think you could go forward with the the three-to-three vote. Um, based on the fact that this is advisory to the council, but I guess I was just gonna say that procedurally. I'm not sure that any action has been taken at this point, because there was a motion to deny. The CUP, and that motion failed to carry for lack of majority, so the CUP has not yet been denied. So, uh, I don't think you've taken any action on it yet. But the motion might have to be phrased differently.
A motion to abstain? A motion to abstain from recomme- recommendation?
Well, considering this is advisory to the council, I I guess you could pass it along to the council with the understanding that. You reached no consensus on how to advise the council. You had a, you had a tie vote with an abstention. Um. Unless you wanna try to rephrase the motion, but I just wanted to point out that. The motion to deny did not carry, so the CUP has not been denied. That's where you're at procedurally.
And it is, yes, it is, and and then he's, he's, he's gone. Um, anyone like to try a different, a another motion? Commissioner Strauss?
No, I, it would appear to me that the action we have taken. Is unclear to going forward, what what needs to happen is we've stated. Basically, our position that we are kind of equally divided on this, and I think the action we have taken, three-three. Obviously, some summarizes are filling on this matter.
So, so I guess I am, the alternative here, right, is it has not been denied, nor has it been accepted. So, I mean, do we have to do a motion to accept the conditional use permit? And have a split vote on that too, and then. Then there's more, I, you know, I don't know, I don't know what else we could do.
I think in form, that makes sense, and in substance, I think we're still in the same place with just a second vote. Um. Is there a different motion for denial? Out there? Is there a motion for approval? Having listened to people, I I suspect that a motion for approval will not get more than three votes. But I don't wanna, you know, it's not for me to judge. Is there a motion to pass to council because we couldn't come to a. A conclusion? My kids just made me wa- re-watch Cat, the first Captain America, and they're really seeing, he's the little guy, and he's getting beat up all the time, and he's telling the other guy. Hey, I could do this all night. But.
Mr. Chairman, I I think it might be clearer maybe if you had a motion to approve and voted on that. And I understand the vote might be the same, but then at least you would have clarity. You know, the the motion to deny is. It's kind of a negative action, whereas the motion to approve, if it's not approved, then I think. You're you're maybe in a clearer spot than having not denied it.
Okay, great. Would would someone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve um conditional use permit with variance for sixty, for two-hundred interlocken Boulevard.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, um, any further discussion? Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote, a roll vote to approve the CUP?
Commissioner Agnew?
Nay.
Commissioner Burtling?
Nay.
Commissioner Miranda?
Nay.
Commissioner Strauss?
Hi.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Chair Namarov?
Nay.
So does that give any better clarity?
Well, Mr. Chairman, in my opinion, it does give better clarity, because now the applicant, the 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 CUP has not been approved. Uh now the applicant has the ability to appeal to the city council, um or the city council can take it up with that. Understanding that it has not been approved, you know. So at least by by absence of action, some result has occurred. Uh that may be the best we can do in this situation.
Thank you, Mr. Kendall. I mean, uh uh our big picture goal is to give some finality to the applicant and allow them a next path. So if if the, if the city's attorney feels that we have done so. Um, I'm, I I appreciate that feedback. Planner Teague, are you okay with going forward like this? I'm, I, I appreciate that feedback. Planner Teague, are you okay with going forward like this?
I am. And also just a point of information, the, the conditional use permit, if it is denied, they do have to wait a year.
Denied by the city council?
Correct, correct.
Okay, okay.
Chair, Chair Nemirov, did you say nay or aye?
I said nay. Do you want me to change?
No, wait, so...
It was two ayes.
Four to?
Yes.
I, I, I counted two ayes and four nays. Everyone, Ms. Olson, does that-
Okay.
That's correct.
So it means that still nothing passed?
But, correct. But according to the city's attorney, we have done a satisfactory analysis and vote to give, make a recommendation and give at least some level of planning, commission finale to the applicant that they can then go to council with. Does that make sense, Commissioner Agnew?
Yeah.
As the, as the, as the applicant, this point of clarification, I am, because you voted to not deny the first time, but now you voted to deny. Is that correct, just from my notes?
I voted to not deny the first time, and I voted to not approve the second time. For your notes. So, yes, I, I am the enigma, I guess. I, I apologize for that. And, um, I, I, for clarity, I, I kind of saw it the way Commissioner Bennett laid it out, although I feel it, perhaps I came down differently than him, he did on it. I feel like the cop, as I said earlier, and again, I maybe, Planner Teague may understand the comprehensive plan better, that my, but my read, after being involved in comprehensive plan and being involved in a lot of public discussions, um, was we said no change, and this is a change. And I, we, you know, and we also had a culture, we kind of had a, a, the spirit of the communications with the comprehensive plan, at the very least, were that we were going to do fewer comprehensive plan amendments than we did in the 2008 to 2018 time period. And so I hope that's helpful to explain, at least for the applicant and for, uh, city staff and city attorney and city council about how I resolved it, in case, in case people are wondering why I voted in this sort of, you know, you know, potentially confusing manner. Is that, is that helpful, or? It is what it is. Um, so, Mr. Livinggood, good luck with, you know, and thank you for your time tonight, and good luck with the council. Um, that concludes our public hearings, um, at eleven-twelve. So next, we have reports and recommendations on our agenda. Planner Teague, are there such creatures?
Nope, nothing tonight.
That takes us to, uh, Commissioner and Chair comments. Any commissioners have comments? No, no, Chair has no comments. Oh, Commissioner Miranda, sorry, I didn't, please, Lou.
Uh, just wanted to say, uh, we had our, uh, third meeting for the Climate Action Plan, uh, today, and, um, we're halfway through. And right now, we're going through, um, uh, you know, the first few sessions were about learning about, um, what, what, uh, how bad it's gotten really uh, in Minnesota. And, um, now we're looking at, uh, actionable items that the city can do to, uh, moving forward. So things that will probably come before the commission itself.
Well, thanks, thanks for your service on that also. It was one hundred and eighteen degrees, I guess, in Siberia today. Um, so thank you. Uh, any, any other commissioners with comments?
Can I have a question, I suppose? Um, do we have a firm guidance on the next meeting, like when we'll start being in person again and what that will look like, or is that still being fleshed out?
Correct.
Fantastic question.
Yep, so your next meeting will be live, so you will all be here at City Hall. It, it will be somewhat of a hybrid. So residents can come to City Hall and testify. They also have the ability to do the, the call-in. Um, staff liaisons will be present at all commission meetings, including planning commission. So I will be there in person. Um, but other staff have the ability to present virtually as well. So I believe Liz, um, Chris and Emily will have the ability to participate virtually. Um, but that's the plan moving forward. There will be a little more details likely emailed out, um, either from MJ or myself. But the plan is for your next meeting, you will be in City Hall.
And is that for one hundred percent of the commissioners at this time, or is there an exception period?
Yeah, so there is an exception period, you know, if it's health-related, COVID-related, um, so yeah, there is some provisions, and we'll detail that when we send out an email.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Um, take it seriously. Uh, I will tell you, a, a friend of mine died recently from COVID. Uh, she, um, very active in the, she was on the Board of Regents for the university, and she was very active in a lot of, um, nonprofit organizations, um, but because of a long-term health issue, she wasn't able to get the vaccine, get a vaccine. But she was going to continue, um, doing her public service. That was a lifelong thing. She was a refugee from the Vietnam War, and she, all, you know, I met her in law school and public service and doing things to improve the community was pretty much her life. And, you know, she wasn't, she took it seriously. She wanted to continue. She didn't want to hide for a year because of COVID. But unfortunately, um, you know, you know, COVID is a serious thing. So if anyone has any concerns at all, I'm, I'm, I'm on your side. Uh, it's, it's, it's a tough thing. So Carrie, I guess I would ask, are there, are there going to be, um, any, you know, any kind of change in the, like, the physical layout, or?
Oh, yes, and that's part of why there wouldn't be as many staff. We're gonna try to spread you out more up on the dais. So some commissioners will sit where staff sit, has sat in the past, to try to get that more space in between.
Can I sit in the AV booth? Getting?
Will there be, um, so Carrie, let me, let me follow that. I, I, as, as, as most of you know, probably, uh, or, 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 or some of you know, I, I, when I'm in the council chambers, I wear, the council gives me a special hearing device to make sure I hear everyone. Um, the acoustics don't quite work for me. Will that work in this scenario?
I believe so. Don't know the detail, but, um, I'm sure that's being considered, because that is an issue not only for you, but others who are participating as well.
Okay, thanks. Any other, that, that was, that was like, yeah, I mean, that was, that was a very important question. Thank you for asking. And so that would be the middle of July, the first, second week of July. Okay. Any other commissioner? Anything? I don't know. I, you, you touched on climate change, you touched on COVID-related things. Those are like two of the big things to deal with. I don't, I don't have anything else tonight. I already gave you plenty. Um, staff, are there any, huh? Commissioner Bennett?
Uh, no, I just, I feel like compared to other nights, I, I just want to acknowledge, like, both, both votes were kind of split and close, and at least personally, not easy. Um, so I don't know if other people are going through that, but I'm sure it's one of those, one of those times where perhaps had we had more time to digest things, things would have shaken out differently. And I know, and why I'm bringing this up is I know as council plans to return to live, I believe they're still gonna continue their delay their decision process, right? So is that true, Carrie, where they're going to hear stuff and then still wait two weeks to decide on it? Is that, are they still gonna do that?
I've, I've heard them discuss that, but I'm not sure they've made a final decision on it yet. But it's, it's something they're certainly gonna talk about.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to bring it up, because I mean, I, I just recall even when I first started on the planning commission several years ago, there's just times where you're on the spot making a decision and you're just, you know, you're right in between which, which side to choose. And, and I've heard from the council that's really helped them make better decisions, because they're able to get more feedback and sleep on it, et cetera. So, I don't know, I just, I don't know, I'm just feeling it from tonight. I don't, you know, had I had more time, maybe I'd make a different decision, so.
I, with you, Commissioner Bennett, I will agree with you a little bit on that, because I, I have, on a few occasions, have voted against what I actually felt was the right answer, but I'm trying to base it more off of fact. And, you know, those, and so it makes it very conflicting. So I'm, you know, often on a, the fence, or sometimes on a fence on where I should really vote, but I, I try to use the, you know, what the fact or, mostly so they, you know, the, the, the grand plan, right? Keep coming back to that, and what is it that is the real mission of what we're trying to do here and, and going with that feeling. So I'm with you on that.
Anyone, anyone else? The only thing I would say in response to that is, it seems to me that everyone is really threshing through everything that's presented and working through decisions and these, we, we've had several weeks in a row of, of, to me, I, I've been on the planning commission for more than seven years. I would say that the last several weeks, we've had a, a higher diet of, you know, items that really require you to think, and, and it really feels like everyone's kind of like thinking. And I, I, I also think that, maybe Carrie better, better at answering, but I think the, um, the council really likes, they like, they like it when we give them a direction on vote, but they really like, is when we do a good job of thinking through the issues and clearly enunciate what our thoughts were and why we got to different positions. Um, so I, I think even though we didn't really come to a clear vote on this one, I think we gave the council very good guidance and, you know, and at least gave them good assistance. I don't know. Planner Teague? That's all I have. Do, you know, does anyone else have anything? Otherwise, I'll let you respond to that and any other staff comments you have.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree with, um, what you just said, in particular tonight, the, uh, the garage. Um, especially given the, the solar just came up. Staff was made aware of it two days ago. So it wasn't in our staff report at all, but you did a nice job sorting through that. Um, but for my comments, just to, um, at the last planning commission, or our last city council meeting, just to give you an update on some of the actions they took, we had a lot of items on their last agenda. So they did the first consideration of the Pentagon North project and the parking ordinance. Didn't really tip their hand for where they're headed, but they did hold the public hearing. Um, Chair Nemirov attended the, the parking ordinance discussion as well. So they'll take action on that at their next meeting in July, July twenty-first. Um, let's see, they considered the, the sign variance on Highway one hundred. You recall the office building? Uh, that the applicant did appeal that, and the council, they approved the variance. So they, um, went the other way on that one. And they also took final action on the, uh, forty-forty project, the affordable housing project at Seventieth and Valley View, as it comes in there. They did approve that. And also the, the subdivision on Mini Haha, the, the little two-lot subdivision, and they approved that as well. That is it for me.
Carrie, one question on the sign, that, that sign matter. There were two variances. One was a larger sign on the building, and the second was uh, highway frontage signs or something. Were, were both approved, or?
They were, they were, yep.
Okay. All right, anything else? Are we, we good, everyone? I think the next matter then is, uh, final salutations, is basically, isn't it? Motion to adjourn, I guess.
I move re-adjourn.
A second.
Ms. Olson, oh, hello, uh, Commissioner, uh, Ms. Olson, could you do a, Commissioner Brubie, did you have any, before we do it, did you have any comments that you'd like to make as a part of member comments?
No, I, I was, I was on, I would have said something.
Okay. Um, so Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote to adjourn?
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Brubie?
Aye.
Chair Nemirov?
Hi, thank you, everyone.